When we update this room, it's a fifty by six and it'll be like iPad and like all that's been better.
I started when we went remote remember? That was quite a big push.
I was just thinking about how much has happened over five years.
I know. I was just thinking about what has happened to you in five years.
Live a lifetime in five years.
I know so much stuff has happened.
Michelle where do you want me to sit?
Uh right there.
You were gonna run it.
Okay so I'm sitting in this chair.
Nope I had it pointing at you. I had it pointing at the table.
No they're super full so am I doing it minimized like this? My brother's wife for probably around twenty years has it's three and three says support Chinese South
Just quickly for the public, how many folks are interested in coming in to the meeting? Yeah, we'll save some time then, just so your audio is audible, if you don't mind just stepping up for public comments, so it's recorded, that would be beneficial. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Alan, regarding our twenty forty-five vision and growth policy updates. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you for, uh, Michelle, we'll get you running.
Yeah, I think so.
Do you want to close it now?
That's true.
Um, can you?
It is good. It's got a ton of everything. Instead of Microsoft Office. What's that?
We're trying, Mr. Matt, please.
What's that?
We're trying, no problem.
Our infamous IT issue.
It wouldn't be a meeting without IT. We got something.
Here we go. Wait, it works now.
Sometimes the resolution of the two screens.
We're gonna buy a hydrogen market. The synergy pattern mechanical robotic forces.
All of us know.
And I really love.
Yeah.
Thought of the video. They had a jumping out, well, they aren't like, oh, look, a job. Right, I mean, I.
What made you think I was an M H P R?
Has been kind of going like this.
Yeah, right.
Pretty much. It's called growing.
Pretty much the whole thing is.
It's called growing things.
Well, you're still doing fantastic, though.
Thank you.
Yeah. Despite everything, you're doing great.
There's a reason why my window is sealed in my office.
It was, it was never gonna be an easy process. And we knew that because we were behind stuff.
Wondering about recently, two thousand and seven was.
No, but Bob, you know, Bob really kind of directed things. It's really good. And we were such a small, and everybody has. Yeah, we talked a lot.
You didn't have seven or eight holidays down town. On trial.
But Bob also came from Jackson, so he had newer music jokes. So he kind of wrote it accordingly. I always wondered how much it was the experience. People are excited about it.
All right. Take it away, huh? All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, citizens in public in attendance. My name is Alan T. from Bob. I am a long range planner with the city of Whitefish. I'm the project manager on meeting Whitefish twenty forty-five. This is the growth policy or the community plan of Ditter. Real quick, just a quick primer. What's your growth policy? There's been a lot of confusion about it. It's an official public policy document used by Montana cities, towns and towns as a guide for making decisions about your future, particularly with regard to land use. Um, growth policy in the Montana term, nobody else uses that term, pretty much everybody else uses comprehensive plan, master plan, community plan. Uh, the Montana Land Use Planning Act, and I will call it M LUPA. It requires now a growth policy for any city of more than five thousand people and a county more than seven thousand people. It used to be, um, it used to be optional, now it's mandatory. This is very important, I think, because there's been so much confusion about this. A growth policy or community plan, it's a policy document. So it's, it's the vision, the values and the position of the city. Uh, and those policies or positions, those are what drive future regulatory actions, work programs, standards, funding. Some kind of things like who are we? What do we want to be? How, what do we value? How do we grow? What should our goals and our strategies be? It's not a scientific or a financial study. Uh, so each, you know, I'll come back to that in a second because I think there's been a lot of confusion that this is a financial or a scientific document. Each section has a narrative of background in general, and then there's existing conditions, there's issues, and then there's goals and objectives which are to address the narrative. Here, here's an example. We have a goal that says maintain and improve water quality of the Whitefish area as the lakes, rivers, groundwater and streams. That's a general goal. And then there'll be an objective, something like this. Initiate a public information campaign to engage community members and provide education on how fertilizers and pesticides can impact the water quality of Whitefish's lakes and streams. So that's an action that's based on that objective, and that's how we form our policy. It's not necessary, though, for example, to give a detailed write-up on every type of trace contaminant that could pollute the water. You know, I've had so many comments about, do you need to add this? You need to add that? We need to know about oil runoff. We need to know what P C Bs do. But all this is, is a narrative to support the goals and objectives and why we got to the goals and objectives. So on October twenty-first, that was the last time I gave you an update, and tell me to slow down if I get moving too fast, Mr. Mayor, because you tend to don't know when I'm talking very quickly. Um, so we listed the items that have been implemented from the last plan. We discussed the public engagement process. We introduced the website, it now has almost six hundred subscribers. I discussed the community outreach in the kickoff meeting on the right end, took a picture of one of our, um, visiting sessions. I presented the existing conditions and the mapping that I'd done. I talked about the visioning sessions and the results, and then I showed them what the outline is. In fact, this was called the bond. There was a word cloud. I got one of the things that you value about Whitefish and kind of showing the people really felt like the people, the community, something they valued about Whitefish. Since we, when we, when I met with you, we were just getting started on the drafts. Uh, since this time, there's been a significant amount of work done. You haven't seen it yet, and now this is made its way to the planning board. But this is what has been completed and reviewed by the community development board. Planning framework setting and climate, I'll run through quickly what these are. The history of Whitefish, the demographics, the vision statement, environment and natural resources, economic development. Now, all these drafts with the red marks as they were, um, out with the community development board comments are all posted on the Engage Whitefish. So if you go to documents, you'll see a folder there that's graph, plan chapters. Anything that is the most recent version with red marks, I'll post it there so you can see what the board has reviewed, what their comments were. The, the way that these are done, each section of this plan is first, I will do a ton of research on what all the existing policies are, any plans that are pertinent studies. I will talk to agencies. I'll look at what census data, maybe case law, what legal precedent is, any state requirements, what the input is of the visiting sessions, and talk to stakeholders and citizens to input. With that, we will write these drafts. And after the drafts are written, these go internally to everybody in the planning department, and they all wait and they make their comments, and then comes back and review that. And then we send it out to all the different departments in the city, and the same thing happens. All the departments make their comments. We incorporate revisions where we can, and then we send it out to outside agencies or experts. So those go to your, your, your Department of Natural Resources, your, uh, your U S Forest Service, uh, et cetera, et cetera. After they come back with all of their comments, we again make revisions, and then we send it off for public review. And after public review, it then goes to the community development board. The reason why I say that is by the time you see these drafts, these have been through months and months and months of review processes and lots of review and input before the final version comes in front of finally the public and the board. So the first section that is done is the planning framework setting and climate, and basically just talks about what's the community plan, what the requirements of the state is, Montana Land Use Planning Act, how it relates to our other plans, how it's organized. It gives a quick overview of what the public outreach was. There's some maps I put together that helps kind of describe where Whitefish is and how it fits in in the small and larger scale. There's a map in there that shows the general layout of the city, uh, where the planning boundary is, and that's gonna change because when we start dealing with land use, we'll probably look at that again. Uh, there's some stuff about the, the climate statistics, and when I went in front of the community development board, there were some pretty minor red marks. Um, all that's been incorporated, and again, you can see what was red marked if you go onto the website and look at that chapter. The next thing it was, uh, come for you was Whitefish history, and it's got a section which is expanded based on citizen comment about Native American, uh, history here in the, in Flathead and, and in the Whitefish. Uh, what the early sellers, most of that history, I assume you know, what to impact the railroad, early layout, buildings and fires, economy, changes in the economy, what the notable expansions and annexations in the city are. Uh, there was a, a section that was added, uh, by one of our citizens about the philanthropy, uh, most of our recent donations in the philanthropy that's happening, which was actually some very great information. You can see that red mark in there. Um, and that's some of the red marks that I saw there. If you look at our previous growth policies, the one, the previous one, the one that's in effect right now doesn't have anything at all about our history. Um, and the one previous to that has a very short section, but now we have a pretty robust section on what the history of Whitefish is, and I gave some of my different sources, so I didn't just make this stuff up. There's a section on demographics, and this was a, a pretty detailed one. We spent a lot of time researching this, but again, there was some, there was some discussion about, well, if we're gonna talk about population, we need to describe the engine, the indigenous population. So we did have a good description of some of the early Native Americans that came here. Then we talked about sort of the population growth over the decades, all the way back from the found, from the very incorporation of Montana. What our seasonal, seasonal population is, because that's very different than our per, than our permanent population, age, income, median income. The thing that's important about this section in particular, and was the big discussion point, was that the Montana Land Use Planning Act, and this is one of the things that's different, is that you didn't, under previous, previous statute, you did not have to choose a, a population projection. Under the new M LUPA, you do. We have to find a, a population projection over twenty years. We have to plan for that population projection. And it tells us that we can do it in three ways. We can use it on information gathered by the census. Uh, we can hire someone to do that, or the city can create that themselves, or sorry, the information coming from the state. We can hire somebody to do this, or the city can do this themselves. And we talked to different people. I reached out to the state, and there was two different methodologies that, that were recommended. Um, the first, my, first methodology was provided by the state of Montana, and it's, uh, you know, more than you care about, but this is very complicated model. And what it does is it looks at our historic growth rate. None of the assumes that land gets more expensive, that goods and services go more expensive, and this population growth curve lines out over time. And it came out to be like a point nine percent growth rate. But then we looked at what our historic growth rate was, and that was somewhere about one point five percent. Hope I'm not putting everybody to sleep on this one. That's closer to what the historic, uh, growth rate was. There was a lot of discussion with the planning board regarding that. And where they landed is that we were gonna go between both because we weren't really sure. So we were gonna fall somewhere between the point nine percent growth rate and a little higher growth rate of about one point nine percent. So in two twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, these numbers are gonna change slightly. I can just plug them in and it'll automatically change. Two thousand and twenty-three, which is when we were working on this, we had about ninety-one hundred residents. Seventy percent of the residents in Whitefish are full-time, thirty percent of the residents are seasonal. You add those together, in general, there's about thirteen hundred people in Whitefish. What did I say? Oh, well, people probably, we probably hoped that thirteen hundred people in Whitefish, thirteen thousand people in Whitefish, and at any given time, everybody was here that, that owns a home there. If you remember, when I did all this existing conditions mapping, one of the thing I did, and I'm still kind of doing, is actually literally counting housing units as they're built. Um, so I'm literally going out there and looking at maps and doing all the information, finding, is there actually a housing unit there? So I know with, with relative certainty that we're very close to about fifty-seven hundred dwelling units plus or minus. So that's how many housing units we have. That's apartments, that's single-family residences. That, so the, the big discussion with the, with the community development board was how are we gonna come up with this? And it said, again, there was sort of a range. And, and where we landed was between what the state model said and what our historic growth rate was, with a little bit of a higher number because there are some discussions about how many, um, seasonal, uh, units are here, and we came up with a number directly between three thousand and five thousand people between now and two, in twenty forty-five. So we know that, but we're projecting that our full-time population will be around two thousand to thirty-five hundred, and then our total population will be around three thousand to five thousand. So that's what we're planning for, three thousand to five thousand over the next twenty years. There was a, a vision that was put together. Remember, we did some visiting sessions, and I'll circle back to that, but I looked at the existing vision that was in the, uh, growth policy that we have now. We talked to all residents during the visiting sessions, and we put together this visioning statement in this, in the sake of time, I'm not gonna read this whole thing to you. Uh, but the way it works is the top is kind of the general visioning statement, and then each of these bullet points is actually a theme statement. So the Montana Land Use Planning Act says that you have to, you have to address six different things. So fostering responsible community development, that was the line, that would be the land use element. Encouraging a diversity of housing, all, obviously a housing element. Being a multimodal community will be the transportation element. Supporting a robust economy is the economic development. Uh, the, the last, uh, second to last would be our environment, natural resources and hazards, and after that is public facilities. So what happens is each plan chapter will have that theme statement, and that is the theme statement based on what the visioning is, and then there's gonna be even more of a statement under that'll be like, we will provide, um, we will provide a, uh, transportation that is available to all segments of the population. So there'll be a little more added to that, but this is basically the way that Vision Whitefish twenty-four, twenty forty-five is set up. It's got the theme statement, it's got the vision statement, and then each of the required elements starts with a theme statement based on existing finds in the community feedback. Does that make sense? There's a lot of information, so if I'm going down a rabbit hole, let me know. Okay, real quickly, the, so the first final element that actually came out was environment, natural resources and hazards, and it ended up being much more detailed than we originally thought, so we broke it into three point, three parts, and these are all the different topics that were done with environment, and I just put up a picture here. One of the things that we're referencing is a septic leachate study that was done by Whitefish Land Use Institute, and that's what you're seeing here. That's incorporated into this, that, so this is all looking at water quality, wildlife and habitat. Although this section had been discussed, uh, I believe in January, it's been discussed over a couple of months, at the most recent community development board meeting, there was a motion to put water quality section of this back on a agenda because there's a member that had some additional comments, some, some, um, policy goals, uh, goals and objectives, they, they wanted to add to the water quality on. So, uh, that will be discussed at the next upcoming, uh, community development board meeting. Through the natural resources section, we don't have a whole lot in our growth policy now, except for one about that, but this is talking about the, the quad, the quantity and the quality of natural resources. It's the, the map that you see there is showing what our prime agricultural properties are, so I got a lot of this mapping from the U S Forest Service, USDA, uh, it's talking about timber resources. I, I reached out to Stoles and talked to them at length about sort of what their visions were and what they were doing with the land. There were some questions about mining, about why are we addressing mining, and it's important to say that M LUPA says we have to address mining. And it tells us what we have to address. So we're not saying we want more money in Whitefish. We're looking at what the impacts of mining could be, and if, if you actually. And if, if you actually look at what some of the requirements are in the county, uh, there could be mining that could be happening on some of this agricultural zone land. Right around Whitefish. So how do we mitigate that? Um, so goals and objectives. And there's a, the next section of this is hazards. And that's the, the section will be done with fire, blood. That will be going to the next Community Development Board meeting in June. Um, that should be going, that, that is already gone through internal review, it's gone through agency review. And sitting in the cooker and I'm expecting to send that out tomorrow. So the public review probably should be seeing. Um, should be seeing an alert coming through on Engage Whitefish tomorrow with the hazard section. Public facilities is, is section I've just finished up and it's. Almost done, but that's talking about our city services, public works. It's talking about sort of what the needs are, public works over the next twenty years. It's going to have a discussion about our water and sewer and all of our different public and civic facilities. This is kind of prime of what's here. How do these come to be? Uh, there's a requirement that the Whitefish School District has to be addressed, so we've already done that. The only thing it's waiting on is that we, we, we are having, uh, our water, wastewater and. Sewer master plans updated as part of this process. They were supposed to be done quite some time ago, uh, like in December. They are, we like just got the sewer one last week, so I'm starting to work on that one. I think Craig is still working on, waiting on the water. So I don't have at all the information. More than, I don't know where we're going to have it, but what I'm going to do is finish up what I can and hopefully we can get this in front of the Community Development Board in the next few months. So I've finished most of this chapter except for those last parts. Okay, economic development. This is the one that was just discussed, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. So the Montana Land Use Act says that we have to do an economic development analysis. Says that we assess existing potential businesses and enterprises. We summarize job composition, labor force and future trends. Look at what the sites are that could, that could support those enterprises, assess what the characteristics in the city to support or constrain those. Look at what our facilities are to support those and then assess our financial, financial, uh, feasibility. So that's what the requirements are. Under the Montana Land Use Act. Now, I'm not an economist. Uh, because there had to be someone that with that kind of expertise, we had to hire someone, but. I want to talk about this real quick because there's been a lot of discussion about this. And, and I want to actually show what happened. So when we did our visioning sessions, if you remember that most of you that came, we had, uh, early on, we had visioning sessions, two different nights. And we brought people into different groups and we had to do mapping exercises and do different kinds of exercise. So. What I'm showing you here are responses from groups of ten. And at the first two visioning sessions, seven of the ten groups. Mentioned that economic diversity, so a diversity jobs and better paid jobs beyond the tourism base. Seven of the ten different groups said that. And I think it's important to mention that there was no specific question about this. We just said, hey, how do you see Whitefish over the next twenty years? And people said a community of all economic classes. That there's more small industry recruiting, economic diversity, more of a middle class and more diverse economy. So this is what the citizens said during visioning. They also ranked, we asked them to rank different things in Whitefish, economic development, uh, economic diversity came up in the middle. One of the things I want to mention is I hear the term small town feel thrown around a lot. That's very important to the residents, the small town feel. There's a lot of different concepts of what that really means. And I'm not going to tell you, I suggest you look that up. Because there's a, a lot of different definitions about what a small town feel is, that I think is very much in line with a lot of things we've heard in the visioning. Okay, so the next one that was a big key was goods and services. So at the first two visioning sessions, two of those groups, so not two people, two groups. Said that they needed more mixed use and that there had issue, that there was issues with the city zoning limiting businesses. So this is what the group said. Now, when we did the quadrant visioning after that, we did mapping exercises and we asked each groups to put pin to stick little stickies on the map. Of different things based on what questions. And at least three different groups made comments on the map about mixed use, about locations, about where there should be neighborhood commercial. One of them was over north of the Viaduct, one of them was down by Smith Field. So there was different comments made by groups of people saying they want to. There was also fifteen individual comments specifically mentioning more goods and services and mixed use. With a few exceptions, what I did is I looked through all the comments that I could find regarding anything having to do with commercial or economic development at all. And I compiled that all together. The only thing that was really negative was most people, it was pretty anonymous that, that the population didn't want to see Big Box. Uh, and there was a lot of aversion to franchise or, or retail chain type businesses. So that was pretty much down the board. People didn't want to see that. The only two actual negative comments that I got was one that said, keep commercial out of neighborhoods and leave the zoning alone. But otherwise, we did get, if you do the numbers, we got about sixty-five different people, if you're counting all the groups together, saying they wanted more goods and services. They didn't want to have to drive out of Whitefish. Because I'm not the expert on economic development, we hired an expert to do this. And this is a couple of years ago. We hired GSBS Consulting and they, they did this analysis and they contacted thirty different stakeholders. And they had numerous one-on-one, one meetings with these stakeholders. They met with people from the city. Most of the departments were set, you know, invites. They had several group meetings with everybody. Uh, they researched market data, trends and statistics. And this took about six months. So there was a lot of data that went back and forth. We made corrections, we had red marks, we went through the process. Sent it out to, to different people. And eventually we got the final report and there was two different presentations made to the Community Development Board. One was in May, one was in April and one was in June of two thousand, I want to say twenty-three, but I think it was two thousand twenty-four. We just asked at the time, do we basically have support? We, we, this is just the preliminary stuff. But part of what we hired this consultant to do was to create goals and objectives for us. So they created goals and objectives and that is what we brought to the public meetings in April and June. And we were generally saying, yes, overall, we're okay with this. And with that, we moved on. Here's the key takeaways of, this is what GSBS, the economic consultant told us. They said that forty-three percent of the jobs are tourism based. But the, although. Only that many jobs are tourists based at the majority of the economy that our money here in Whitefish is tourists. Uh, they said that there's a need to diversify the Whitefish economy. And that's been the, that, that has been what's come from all of the economic development studies that we've done. And both of our growth policies have said the same thing. Seventy-six percent of the people who work for Whitefish do not live here. Or work for Whitefish businesses do not live here. Sixty-nine percent of the white, or seventy percent of the Whitefish residents are employed in management business and financial sectors. But only ten percent of those jobs are offered here in Whitefish. Twenty-one percent of the residents work remotely and all the rest of them have to commute out of Whitefish or wherever they work. Here's what they said the strengths were. We're a strong tourism economy, that we've got our resort tax for infrastructure, that our proximity to, to Glacier and Airport, and particularly. The rail access. That's one, one major pro that we have is how close we are to rail. Economic weaknesses, the consultant told us, was that we don't have any economic diversity, meaning a lack of jobs, that our zoning is too specific. Uh, we, we looked at what the stakeholders said during the, we, I have minutes from the stakeholders and the stakeholders said similar things. The businesses said that the, that the zoning was too restrictive. There's a lack of housing for employees. And that the basic needs and services more, are more available nearby communities, which is some of the same things that we heard in the visioning sessions. The recommendations of this report said to attract more diversity in primary job generating businesses. Review our zoning to see if it's too strict towards businesses. Determine if there could be any additional neighborhood, commercial or mixed use locations in the city, which is similar to what some of those mapping exercises showed. Consider limiting the number of particular business types in the downtown. So for instance. How many jewelry stores do we want in the downtown? How many art galleries? And, and I've heard some comments about, well, that's discriminatory and we can't do that, but. That's what zoning does. Zoning, zoning can say what types of uses are allowed. And so then you can also say you can only have X amount of short-term rentals, you can only have Y amount of dispensaries. So zoning can say what is too much. It also recommended considering studying additional parking management because there was a lot of discussion during, uh, the, uh, economic development study about parking. And how parking is an issue and what are the different things that could be addressed with that. Particularly parking downtown, uh, to increase customer turnover and, and look at maybe revenue. And there's different strategies. And one of them was looking at paid parking, which has become kind of a hot topic, I think. So with all that information, based on the visioning sessions, the economic and the market study. All of the past economic studies, the two existing growth policies, looking at thirty different community plans across the country. And then looking at state statute and talking to the Montana Department of Commerce, we prepared this economic development element. That element went to twenty-eight different agencies. So it went to all the stakeholders are involved and it went to the Montana Department of Commerce and everybody else and came back. It was posted on the website and there was a load sent to five hundred and sixty different subscribers. I received. Through, I received three actual direct, um, comments on the draft. Um, two of them were positive, one of them was, it was a pretty extensive revisions. We've, since this time, we've received many, many letters. I think you've got a hundred and eighty pages of letters if you read them all on your staff report, uh, both pro and cons. Here's the key arguments. Do we want to encourage new businesses to locate here? Should we encourage businesses that typically pay higher wages? Does Whitefish have a vast economy? Are all the goods and services needed for locals available and affordable? Is it acceptable for residents to have to drive out of town for jobs or goods and services? Are there any locations or additional neighborhood serving commercials appropriate? Now, should phone act reader parking be considered downtown to generate funds for additional parking for public transit? Is targeting, is targeting primary job generating businesses and more goods and services accelerating growth? And then there's discussions about just longstanding, uh, economic development studies of the city. So these, these are the hot topics that have been discussed that you've seen in many of these letters. This topic here has been brought up a lot, rapid versus moderate growth. And it's, it's important to say, these are not used in the economic development element. These, these did not come from us. But what this planning element does is it looks at diversifying the economy and providing better access to jobs and services. The goals and the objectives, there's not a rapid growth goal or a moderate, moderate growth goal. Commercial leases are going to come and go, commercially zone properties are going to develop. The intent was to try to get beneficial businesses and goods that benefit Whitefish residents. Growth and development is addressed during the land use. When the types, intensities and locations are designated on the land use map. Question is like, what policies could have prevented the two thousand twenty, two thousand and twenty-one influx? That's probably rapid growth. But that had nothing to do with our economic development policies we had at the time. Our demographic chapter projects growth between three thousand and five thousand people. So if you talk about like rapid and moderate growth, that's probably the closest thing so far we have in the plan speaks to that. So we received, uh, I've received many different revisions. Uh, the most recent one I received, first a version in April and then a second version, uh, about a week prior to the Community Development Board. This was from the heart of Whitefish. And they submitted relatively extensive revisions and corrections. Uh, staff has received initially letters in support, uh, mostly from F F R G. Uh, I've got ones from Citizens for a Better Flathead and several individual citizens. So there was another then vision, another version that went out to the Community Development Board at their most recent bit meet. Uh, you have seen that's been included in your packet, but there's a lot there. So I'm, all I'm going to do is I'm just going to tell you how a difference differs from the version that you originally saw. So the first thing is that it notes that the Whitefish economy is mostly balanced with tourism being half of the economy. Versus the staff version that says the economy is pretty unbalanced and it's predominantly tourism. Again, you can make the decisions, not my call. They add an additional page regarding the benefits of tourism. It adds the language that the most pressing issues related to tourism are short-term rentals, second homeownership and availability of workers. But it deletes the language that we have that says that there's negative impacts including traffic. Affordability for locals, difficulty protecting natural resources and the community character which we used to us here in the first place. It adds several additional paragraphs regarding the impacts of short-term rentals and seasonal homes. It adds that the public sentiment towards tourism recently becoming more positive after a decline. Apparently there's a study, I haven't seen it, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I just didn't have a study. So apparently there was a big decline in the sentiment towards tourism. Apparently it's on the upswing now. And it also discusses air DNA, uh, air DNA and statistics, which is a count of how many short-term rentals you had. I don't know if it really talks about, you know, Whitefish, but I think it refers to more to the five-nine-nine-three-seven area. In regard to goods and services, it's revised to indicate that locals choose to drive out of town rather than they have to drive out of town for necessary goods and services. It removes the language regarding deficits of affordable goods and services for locals. It removes the language that locally serving businesses have moved out of downtown, but it has language regarding specific types of businesses that are here now. It removes the findings or report that suggested zoning is too restrictive regarding goods and services and restaurants being unaffordable to locals. It changes the narrative to say that there are few versus many visioning comments regarding economic development. It deletes the recommendations to support food trucks, pop-up shops or other temporary businesses to provide, provide lower costs to locals, which was recommended in the economic development study. It removes the recommendation to consider the limitations on downtown businesses, which I talked about dinosaurs, art galleries. And it removes recommendations regarding studying parking management. Those are the differences between the, the version, the red mark version that you've seen now. At the May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Community Development Board Work Session, the board moved four to two to accept the Heart of Whitefish draft chapter entirely with a small revision. And the small revision. Was to take out the name of the Executive Director of Housing in Whitefish that was directly named. It was a very well-attended meeting, approximately the same number of people testifying for and against. Since the work session as of this morning, I've received seventeen letters voicing concerns with what happened. Two letters supporting the revisions and one generally neutral letter, which was just kind of a more of an informational letter. Her primary concern to the public was that the meeting notice did not intend, indicate that the board would vote to replace staff's draft with an alternative draft. Created by an outside party. It's most, most of the letters talked about that. So this is kind of running through the proposed plan outline. The exec, the executive summary and the introduction. Those are supposed to be at the beginning, but those aren't done yet. Once we're done with the whole plan, we're going to go back and then work on the executive summary and introduction. There'll probably be a letter from the mayor of the council or something like that. So surprise. Um, what the rest of it now is the planning framework, the history, the demographics and vision is all done. And then the plan elements I've described to you, what has already been done. And then there'll be a section on the implementation and in the appendices. So the next steps. In June twenty-fifth, twenty, June, June twenty-fifth, there'll be a community development work session. Uh, again, as I mentioned, uh, the board moved to put the water quality sections back on because the board member had some. Additional objectives and goals he wanted to add. So there'll be discussion about that. There'll also be review about the draft hazards chapter. So if you're interested in wildfire, that will be the one to show up on. Uh, July sixteenth will be a Community Development Board Work Session, probably. To discuss the draft public facilities chapter. Well, I don't think I'm going to have everything done on the waste or the water. Plan yet because we don't have all the information, but I've got most everything else. So I'll get a mostly complete section to them and then we can come back on the things that were unfinished, but we got to keep moving on this process.
Should be June eighteenth, uh, June twenty-fifth for the next work session.
Oh, sorry, June eighteenth. So, so let me say it again, June eighteenth is the next work session. So, sorry, lots of dates. August twenty, twentieth will be Community Development Board Work Session. I'm not sure about this. We're saving transportation on that, but I'm just barely getting started on that chapter. So I'm not sure if I'll have it done, be able to get it to public review by that time. But then we'll be starting to move into, uh, September and to the end of the process will be land use and housing. And, and we'll talk about that in a second. So we received a pro housing grant. I think we found out today. We got three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And this can be whispered.
It's for sure.
Yeah, we got the money. So we got three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um, this grant is to help us create, implement the growth policy as well as zoning reforms to comply with the Montana Land Use Planning Act. Right? It's important to know that May, it's all a year from now, eleven months from now is our deadline to have all this done. That's why we're trying to keep this moving forward. One of the questions we had in the council is, should we, should we consider putting on R P for our consultant to us, to assist with the land use elevator? Because I think this is going to be a lie or what? What the consultant would do would help with the public outreach and help build consensus on what the land use and the future land use map is. I'm going to talk about this in a second, but looking at maybe going towards a more form-based type, uh, architectural transects, which I'll talk about in a second, and neighborhoods and make recommendations on overlays. And then make zoning text amendments. So here, I'm going to give you something. We're using Missoula because they actually did a pretty great job here. There's a, there's a, two types of basically theories, right? There's what's called Euclidean zoning. And then there's transect zoning. Euclidean zoning is your land use, is your use-based zoning. So. Zoning says these are all the uses that are allowed in this area. On the other, all the, on the other end of that spectrum is where you're looking at more of the forums. What does it look like and how does it function? And then somewhere in between is usually what the cities, what the cities decide on. Missoula just been, recently finished their land use plan and they were using a transect-based model. They call it place types. This is what we're looking at right now. So. In this idea, first we're giving key terms of what these things are and they're showing what they look like. So here's what single-family houses look like. Here's some pictures. I don't expect you to probably be able to read all that. Here's what a triplex looks like. Here's some different examples of triplexes. Here's what small, small stores, neighborhood stores look like. Here's some examples and Missoula even gave some, some addresses of where these types of things are. And they say, here is your definitions of this. And then based on that, we have different place types. So there's the urban residential high, there's urban residential low. And the, the way that a transect works, uh, everybody, most people know, they've seen the transective evolution where you see the fish crawling out of the ocean. And at the very end, there's the man walking and somewhere in between, it kind of shows creature walking. That's the way a transect works, is you start from like the most natural open space that there is. All the way to the highest density development. And then somewhere along that transect, you take a slice and you say that in this particular area. That's the kind of development type we have. Does that make sense? That's what, that's, Missoula's not calling it a transect, but if you're interested in this, look up transect planning or look up the smart code. Or just go to Missoula because they're all kind of the same thing. It's really the way it's going now. It's really the way it's going now, they're getting away from land use. It's important to say that the Montana Land Use Planning Act is saying it is starting to put new restrictions on this stuff. And it's telling us that we have to start allowing, once, once the plan is done, then it's an administrative process. So the ideas of conditional uses aren't going to happen when I say that because we have two hundred different uses. We separate candy store and ice cream parlor as two separate uses that are zoning filled. And the question is, is that necessary? So this price type designation is looking at, in these place types, this is the kind of development that you have. And then they've got a description here, urban residential low. And they're showing like some, some aerials to show the way that those types of developments occur. And they've got some pictures of the building types to say within this place type, this is the kind of development you'll see. And then there's a little description of what that looks like. And then there's even more development status. And it's, it's showing the way that buildings sit on the lot and how buildings relate to the neighborhood, how high, how wide they are, what the, what the ground floor ratio is, what the environmental impacts are. So again, it's focusing more on what the built form looks like and how it functions more than separating ice cream parlor from bakery. With that, I know that was a lot of information, but I just kind of wanted to talk about where we're at and where we are moving forward. So with that, I don't know if that was a good wrap up, but questions or direction?
Alan, we'd like to start speaking quick. Dana, at our, at our work session last week on the budget, I asked you that you could find whether or not we have to be, how, what has to be done by next night? If you were able to find that information?
You know, they're still working with HUD to determine what and how we can spend the funds. But the last I heard from Kelly was that we have to have all of the plan completed and the zoning implemented.
And the money spent?
Yeah, the money would have to essentially be spent by then, I mean.
Alan, is that, are we on a timeline that can accomplish those things? With, if you have to get the implementation done? At the current pace of, based on your experience so far, just give me your best estimate.
By myself? No.
With a, with a consultant for the land use section?
Possibly. I mean, I'm still arguing with Kelly about part of that. It says, it, what it says in the Montana Land Use Planning Act is that the city is that by, we have to come into conformance by May two thousand twenty-six. And part of that conformance that says we have to have a schedule for what the zoning implementation is. So my argument is it doesn't say we have to have it done. It says we have to say how we're doing it and when. So, so I'm not quite an ingredient with that. If we're on that schedule, I think we'll have the growth policy done by May. I, right now, I'm not on track to have all the zoning done as well.
And it just depends on how the grant application by the state and league was drafted.
Okay, and do we have?
We don't want to get on your story yet. We are still waiting. It sounds like they've been meeting with them frequently. We got notification today that the HUD is ready to sign the contract. So that means we will have the money because I think it's been up in the air if it's funds that would get cut at the federal level. And so we'll know more in the coming weeks. You know, the May deadline, I mean, is, makes it difficult. But I do believe the three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars could go a long way to have consultants assist in getting the zoning part completed as well. You know, and if we don't, the issue that I see is we just, we won't utilize those funds. We'll have to use taxpayer dollars to, local taxpayer dollars, because that's probably taxpayer dollars. Local taxpayer dollars to complete.
To fund like a consultant. What can those funds specifically be used for?
Anything.
Consultants.
So really, it's anything to implement MLUPA and to have the zoning reform done. So consultants is really the primary use that I see. It was to include our wildfire, we were going to use it on our community wildfire protection plan. That could be funded elsewhere. We'll talk about that one, so budget, how we're funding things. But that was one of the parts of it that we were hoping to be able to do with those funds. We're, we've already started the housing needs assessment update, so that's being, we're spending our own funds on that. But yeah, really, it's what the communities are using. And for example, council is getting a million dollars to help them get theirs done. They're using consultants. The, the range of how much was requested by each community of the eleven communities varies. But this four hundred thousand dollar mark's fairly average when you look at what amount's been awarded, so.
And, and as of now, we'd have to, we just, we'd have to either give that money back or?
Yeah, they'd be allocated to either other entities or give it back to HUD if we don't meet that.
Even though we already have it and we can?
We don't have the money right now.
Oh, okay.
There's a risk when you, when you receive a grant, if the, if there's a deadline for the grant and you don't meet that deadline, they could request the funds to come back. Again, we don't have the grant documents yet. But it could occur where if we do start drawing down and then we don't meet that deadline, they could ask us to reimburse them. So I think we just have to be prepared to have that money available. But again, I'm at a point right now where I can't tell you what that grant agreement even says. I don't know when the deadline is for the zoning. I know that at a minimum, the plan has to be adopted.
Right.
But the zoning implementation, Kelly's first reaction was, yes, you have to have the zoning implementation done. And it all depends on how they applied for that grant. You know, the push was to get this implemented because the push of the legislature was to have this policy, this, this new planning act in place to avoid the top down approach that the state was taking, saying you have to have, you know, X, you have to have this kind of density, this kind of roadways, this kind of parking requirements. That's what MLUPA is all about, is that there is local control, be able to decide what's best for our community. Otherwise, we are subject to every bill out there that has made requirements, say sixty foot story buildings, now that we have for downtown or a heavy commercial. This plan helps to drive that and you're actually according to Kelly and how the, where those bills are impacting state law, MLUPA lets you go around those. And you get to choose what's right for your community.
But we have to have our, we have to have our plan adopted.
And you have, yes, we have to have the plan adopted statewide. We're supposed to have it adopted by May.
Period, okay. And these delays that we've been experiencing are not helping over soon?
You mean when I was out with a broken foot?
No, I'm not talking about the president. I'm talking about the constant revision and rewriting and, I mean, I've heard that you've had a lot of, every draft has been a lot of back and forth and very difficult to kind of, it's taking your time away from the work that you have to get going.
When I get, so I, I, I kind of described the process of how the review and the writing works because I think it's important to mention this takes months.
Right.
It's not like me just in the middle of the night texting stuff. Takes months. So when I, after it's gone through all the review, if I now get a bunch of additions that haven't been reviewed, it takes me days of work and then maybe more reviews. So it's, you know, there's, there's been some revisions that were added that I've been working three days on. That's three days and I'm not working on the growth policy. I'm working on the comments that I received coming up for another work session, three days.
Giuseppe?
Yes. Alan, you know, I go by the book. Let's start, I, I want to understand, Montana Code annotated, and I think it's seventy-six dash one dash six oh one, defines the subject who writes the growth policy, defines the reviewing body and defines the decision making body. Am I correct that between a city charter and a city code and the state law, the subject drafting the growth policy is the staff, the planning department? The body reviewing and recommending and listening to public hearings is the community development board? The final decision maker of this process is the city council. Am I correct in this?
Everywhere I've ever worked, yes. That doesn't seem to be the argument on all sides and I might want to push that to Angie or Dana.
Would you pull, while, while she does that, would you pull that slide where you said many views, just for our benefit?
Really?
Yes.
The, the argument that the staff doesn't write the growth policy is never me. I've not heard that before.
Okay. So, so my question is, if, if the staff has gone through the quadrant meetings, the visioning meetings, I personally submitted, so I know many of my friends submitted feedback on the website. So you have an amount of data that tells you some facts that come from the community. Okay? Your plan or your draft, either forward or backward, your plan was reflecting that dataset. Okay, I remember one that says, the red line says tourism is a major economic component to our city because forty-three percent, it's a relative majority. But then after the work session, it became one of the components. I remember you saying, the plan saying, the community feels they have to drive to Calisper for generic underwear, you used that example. And then after the review, we could buy generic underwear downtown. I'm exaggerating, but that's the red line that I read. Now, probably you all read the same red line. My question is, is the community development board acting in a role advising councils or in the role rewriting the growth forums? And if it's one or the other, which one is the legal position and role for each actor? And I, I know I'm asking you, but maybe?
I appreciate the, the discussion, but I am not going to answer that question.
We have a city attorney back there.
So, gee, to answer your question, the community development board, which is sweet on us, the planning board, their role is to recommend the growth policy and propose compromises and resolutions to the governing body. So I think the way that I read state law is that the community development board is not going to write the growth policy. They are to look at it, make suggestions, take policy, comments, not rewrite the entire program.
So are we looking at a breach of protocol here right now?
I don't think we're looking at a breach of protocol. I just think that state law is what state law is. And as far as even the entire rewrite of the growth policy, I don't think that's how it supports. I think their role is to recommend changes for certain. They have a lot of power and we, you know, respect what they say and what they think. But I also think that taking away from staff is a little bit out of reach.
And, and are the wholesale changes that were made at the last CDB meeting in the request of part of Whitefish, is that, is that cushioned to wholesale strikeouts and edits?
Were those comments posted on her website and were those available to the public? Absolutely they were. Do I think that the public knew that the community development board would be voting on a wholesale rewrite of the growth policy as an assistant from staff? I, I, you know, and again, the conversation Alan and I had is a little probably, is it fair? No, I think it should probably go back to the public and those comments be digesting that circumstance, yes, I do.
Point of, point of observation, if nothing else. I don't think, what at least I saw of what was done in terms of in the economic growth or whatever this policy is, was anything other than what the planning board has done historically and otherwise. They take information from staff. They take information from the public. They try to make the best decision. And as we do a lot of times with any kind of zone or request for a CDP or anything else, we will make edits. We will make changes. Some are large, some are small. Some are significant, some are not. Some are semantics, some are not. I don't think, even in this instance, I would tell what, what was done by the community development board was a wholesale rewrite. Was there a lot of red? Most of it was the versus the. I mean, it's like, okay, I kind of get that. And some of its perspective. But on, on, on the overall concept, I thought that was the whole point of this particular exercise was for, and my understanding, my understanding is, is that even though there have been changes to the economic development section or any other section, almost none of those have actually been taken to the public for a public hearing on whether these changes stay or not or whether they're going to recommend this section to the council or not. Those public hearings still need to happen. So that, nothing has happened that I'm aware of with respect to the actions taken by the board because they are final decisions without a public hearing. All of that is going.
I totally agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you. I just am listening to people that are very concerned about.
No, no, I get that and I get.
I understand it's not a man of public hearing. You guys, you folks are going to adopt this out, whatever it looks like. But I also think that there's some legitimate concern that maybe the public didn't like. Have they, they've heard this statement. But again, Alan posted all the comments. I mean, we want the public to be informed and look at the engaged website, their engaged Whitefish website with Alan Stone.
Language. Again, I'm just trying to clarify here.
Yeah, no, no.
My understanding, my understanding.
I don't think that legally, I don't think that without other bounds. I just feel that, you know, the public also has been able to say, oh, we weren't aware about this, this is going to happen. And it was fine, but it will come back to you folks anyway, so.
My bigger concern is if they're making changes, hopefully, right? Throughout the whole process, the entire document when it lands on our lap, how are those changes going to be tracked so that we can thoroughly review the changes?
I think that's, I mean, it's a big document. No, I agree. I, I think we'll, I presume that that's what will happen. I hope so.
Alan is doing, Alan, he brought on his, he had those changes.
Well, I mean, that, that's been my question too.
So what's the next step?
What I'm trying to do is the, the drafts that staff presents to the board and the public wants to, after it goes to the public hearing, or then, sorry, to the work session phase. When it gets to the work session phase, they're going to see a clean draft. And any changes that have made, been made at that work session since the original version, I mentioned those right now are red marked and those are posted on the site. Now, I don't know what it's going to look like. I mean, my hope is that when, at the end of the process, this whole thing now, so the board's looking at this piecemeal and then this whole thing is going to be somewhat assembled and it's going to come back in front of them next winter. And they're going to look at all this stuff with all the changes they've made. And hopefully they're going to say, okay, we're good with this, we'll send it out to the council. And hopefully the, the council will be okay with it. How are we going to track all the remarks? Right now, I don't know. I've got, I've got all the stuff that, that has been changed is right now added. Is that the way it's going to look when you get it from the way staff submitted it? I don't know yet. We haven't had that discussion.
I think that's a council request. I mean, I think you can.
Do you want the black, you just want a black version, clean copy coming from the board? Or do you want all the red marked changes that have happened from the time staff gave it to the board to you? Because that's probably, that's a direction from a council.
I would prefer a clean version and a red line credited version. And I don't know if that's possible.
It is possible because I'm doing that right now. I mean, I can, right now, I do, I can very much do that. Right now, everything's, I got all the track changes on. And I can provide you a red mark, you know, if you want to look at five hundred pages or whatever. You can have a red mark copy of everything that, that originally came to them and then you can have a clean copy that, that has a long part right there.
Fair enough. Angie?
Just a couple of quick comments about the process, I guess. If we take the Montana Code annotated, Giuseppe, Donald, then we end up with a document that's strictly written by staff and has zero public input.
No.
Because we're just saying we're going to adopt all of those sections as they come out. That said, I have to agree with Angie that when we see a large bulk of wholesale changes come through from one specific group, I think that that presents an issue. So between the, the hard and fast model of we only do what staff says and we adopt a whole bunch of stuff from a specific group, there is a happy middle in there somewhere where we have the right amount of public input, but we still have the direction from staff that we need. And I'm thinking what we're seeing with this particular section is that's what's not being viewed by the public and I have to agree with them. I think that we got a whole bunch of changes from one specific group of people and they all got adopted pretty much wholesale. And I see that as a problem, just as I see it a problem if we only adopt everything the staff feeds us. So, and I don't think that's what you're saying, Giuseppe, but that's what MCA. So, and I don't think that's what you're saying, but that's what MCA says. It's like, they write it, they give it to us, and no one else.
And just one vote. If you saw the black version only, and I, with all due respect, I disagree with you, Frank. These are substantial changes there, because if we do it, if we get only the black versions, something that says, and this is not the staff saying it, the staff collected the data from the public. Locals choose to drive out of town, or do they have to drive? So, someone said, I go to Murdoch for my underwear, as I was sitting there. Um, removes language regarding deficit or affordable goods and services for locals. So, either the black station, this is what we get without that language. So, we lose what the public said. Okay, the couple of people who rewrote those sections are public too. But how representative of the whole public are they? How representative of the public that doesn't live downtown are they? And I rather go back to MCA that says, I'm not saying, don't, don't do the public hearings. I'm saying the Community Development Board recommends, not rights. They did right. And number, if you look at the red line, a number of those paragraphs are rewritten with input that then come through the process from the public. And that's my concern as a servant to this community, the whole community.
Steve.
I think that's what I just said. That's all right.
And I'm glad you restated it so well. Thank you.
I, I think that's been a problem since the beginning, because I, as you guys know, I was on the planning, I was the representative on the planning board for a long time. And that's been the problem from the beginning is that there's been this push from the planning board to have a lot of authorship say in the actual chapters, which is delaying the process. And it's also, and the, the changes are substantial. They're not changing the to thus or whatever. It's, they are substantial changes, like all of these ones listed are substantial. They change the whole tone of the chapter. And that's been the problem from the beginning. Um, you know, the planning board's job, and I've been on the planning board for a long time, is to say, yes, we can recommend this, or no, we can't. And we can try to massage it to make it more recommendable if we, if we see fit. But there's never been a time, like, like, for example, adding something to a CUP. There's never been a time when the planning board rewrites fifty percent of anything. And, and wasn't even the planning board that wrote it. It was an organization within the city that rewrote this, and that, that's caused for great concern about how that board is operating, where they're getting their information from. And, and, and it shows a genuine, somewhat genuine lack of trust in staff's ability to do their jobs as professional planners. And I think that's really the, that, that's a big part of the problem. And I think that's why we have people in this room tonight is because that's really what's happening. And I, I think we need to, as council, we need to get a handle on this. Because I don't think, I don't think the public really knows what's going on. I don't think staff knows how to react really necessarily. And, and I think we're kind of getting cut out of the situation. We're going to end up with a five hundred page red line draft and a four hundred page black draft that we have to make a decision on in, in one month if we get it that, that quickly, because we're up against a four hundred thousand dollar deadline here too. So, I think that we need to really kind of get a grasp on this and give the, the planning board some direction on how we want them to operate throughout the rest of this process.
Rebecca?
So, I read both. Um, I, I think there's like three or four main areas that people are worried about. And one is with commercialization of the neighborhoods. Like, um, we have had that being fought out ninety-three north and, or west and, um, in the lakes, but it is something that has come up. Another one is, um, the locals being left out because we don't have our needs met here. Um, so to me, it felt kind of like what happened is the new version kind of whitewashed all the locals concerned a little bit. But I'm wondering if what you could do is start with that and then go through, I think you did a wonderful job listing what got taken out, and then go step by step and look at whether or not those need to get placed back in with the one that was accepted at the last meeting.
That's where he has a vote from the planning board of four two two to put this version in, and that's why I'm raising the issue at first.
So then stop talking.
Not apologize, I don't do.
Yeah. So, so just, just so that some of what I think Alan has captured the impact of, um, what the locals are feeling, what we're going to be feeling in twenty years. But the heart of Whitefish version is kind of spinning it in terms of commerce and tourism is great and things like that. And I just think it would be good to actually spend a little time, um, looking at each of those areas and maybe putting them back in if that's what the board was going to vote for. So, Alan's already having a coronary over there. Okay, is that too much? You don't like that idea, Alan?
I'm here to win the council.
So Rebecca, the plan, if we need development board already approved that language.
Yeah.
You would have to, as a council, give directions to the planning board, or to Community Development Board, essentially saying, you guys need to reconsider that. We're telling you, if that comes to council, we're not willing to adopt that. You might as well make the changes now. And, and maybe that's what just needs to be shared if that's a council.
I think it would be.
Majority sentiment with this.
I think it would be wise to take the time now to go back through that list that Alan has created and have discussions about what needs to be included.
Not right now, is it time?
Not, not right now.
I guess my answer to that would be, the thing that's concerning is there's some philosophical just differences.
Yeah, there are.
We either are or we aren't a tourism business company.
Yeah.
Um, there are, you, you, locals can either get goods and services or they can't. So, so I mean, it's like, it's a fundamental, it's a fundamental disagreement with, with the economic development study, the visioning and policies. Right? I can only, and this is not Alan. This is, I'm reporting what the data I was given is. I'm not going to spin the data. It's not correct. That's, I guess the board can do that and send that to you, but I'm not going to spin the data.
But sometimes you can write things in a way that expresses both concepts.
Understood.
Yeah.
I can try to soften it down, but what comes out of my desk is going to be correct.
Well, yeah, you have to do that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a fair question for us to ask. And, because I don't, my, I've got one view on what we want the Community Development Board do with this particular project. It's a project. It's not regular business. Um, but it might be fair for us to say, make a decision or a recommendation that we direct the planning boards or the community government board to simply say, we won't recommend this section, or we will recommend that section as prepared by staff. And then, if that comes to us that way, where do we go? I think we want some of the hard work that's going to be required in terms of writing, uh, orientation, that kind of stuff, to be done at the planning board level. I think that's what we want. But, you know, if we go with Steve or the Giuseppe's approach to life, which is the planning board gets what they get from staff, and this, and their only option is to, I like that or I don't like that. It's like, I, I don't think that's what we want. If that's what we want, we need to say so. But I don't think that's the way this thing is supposed to operate, nor do I think that's what we want.
I think you mischaracterized what I said, Frank.
I may.
Um, I, I never said that, that we, that they don't have recommendations about certain things to add. But wholesale rewriting is, has been the, that's, that's been the focus since the beginning of this. And one of the members even said, it's our job to write this, not the staff's job. And that's been the focus of the planning board, and I think they need direction on what is acceptable in terms of what to, what, what to require staff to do for them and what to recommend to us. I, you're right, we need them to do the heavy lifting of, over the next year to get this done. And they need to understand where it lifts, rather than, and what to lift, rather than they got to lift up the whole thing. Because that's, that's been the focus since a year ago. That's my opinion of what we should be doing tonight, but that's, because that's my experience for the last year.
But I also think we have to be efficient now. I mean, and not kill off our planner who's been working so hard on everything. So, I think if you just stick to what was adopted, open the discussion back up, see what needs to change, what, what there's a buy-in for. Like, I liked how you described what's going on in our town. I thought it was realistic, you know? Um, and so a lot of it, hopefully, a lot of it can come back in in a way that will be acceptable. But I don't think you should start over. I think you should take the accepted one and then go through this strategically and add things back in as needed so that you get it done. And, uh, um, there, I didn't feel like they were that different. I just felt like they were spun differently. Like you have a realistic grittiness about what, what the locals are experiencing, you know? And the other version doesn't, so.
Right. I think one thing that's really important to me is I do care a lot about the, the red line version. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, this document is a collection of opinions in a lot of case that people don't agree on in, in a lot of these things. And there's different opinions within a community, within the planning board itself, within the council. And I know when I get this back, when this eventually does come back to the council, I don't want a three hundred page document that does not tell me where the key points of controversy are. Like, I want to be able to, that, I mean, one of the whole purposes of setting up this process with the planning board is to vet out all the things that are sort of broadly agreed on and narrow down, once it gets to us, to what are the really key things that there's just not a lot of, or where do we need to help make some of the final decisions that are just, we're having a really hard time making? And so when, I think, what I would like to see is when this comes back, is a red line version, but I mean, I don't care about the language. I mean, if we're, like, to Frank's example, if it's they or this or whatever, I don't want that. I want to know, you know, the parking recommendation is really controversial, so what do you want to do with that on the city council? Um, and so I really hope that when this comes back, that the, the key areas that are politically difficult, controversial, or otherwise are highlighted for us to understand, um, to make the process of getting to the final adoption the most efficient that it can be. Um, and I don't, I think the Community Development Board, I mean, I want them to be empowered to make the best draft version possible, but I don't, I, I think that it needs to be where there's, just, just like I said, where there's disagreement, that needs to be clear down the line, um, as well. So we can also weigh in on the subject when it comes back, so.
Any other comments? So I think we can bring this up at our regular meeting, perhaps at the end, other council comments. I would like to give the public opportunity to comment, so we'll turn to follow comment, as in Toby's hand, and then Dakota, and Rhonda. Toby, if you don't mind, just step up so that we can record you for the record.
Uh, Toby Scott, to Whitefish Park, we're ready. Uh, I am on the Community Development Board. I will confess, I was one of the two people that voted against this implementation. And I, after hearing all the observations and actually seeing this list of changes that were made, I think that the Community Development Board basically just saw the easy way out. We had the staff report, and then we had the heart of Whitefish report. And I'm like, oh, well, geez, this is not the other thing. We did not go through item by item or anything. This was sort of popped on us. I can't say at the last minute. Had everyone, had everyone on the Community Development Board been hot on the trail and gone on the Vision Whitefish site, had we seen the, the submission of perhaps this, we might have said, oh, well, wait a minute, we need to check and see, like, removing the parking recommendation. Try and park downtown during the summertime, you know, and there, there are answers to that. And so, that's my opinion, is that the board took the easy way out. And I didn't want to take the easy way out, so I just said, no. But I like, uh, I love the fact that all of you are understanding and realizing the differences between and the problem facing us. I particularly like Rebecca's notion to go through and line by line. You know, whether it's backwards of saying, oh, remove the recommendation of parking, well, where was that in the heart of Whitefish? Let me take that out and hopefully put it back in, and line by line. Insert some of the things. I'm not against the heart of Whitefish. I, I lately, I'm sort of questioning who is the heart of Whitefish, or how many people are there, and so on and so forth, but that's now a question for now. Uh, so that's sort of my opinion of, if I can advise you to, um, direct the Community Development Board to reevaluate this, perhaps on a line by line basis. Because it was kind of just the easy way out. That was a three and a half hour meeting to decide on the easy way out too.
Thanks, Toby. Good.
He gave me to walk up. I don't like.
Whitefish, we can hear that.
Ah?
The other side of the office.
So, I've lived in Whitefish for about five years, and I think that council and staff does a great job of governing. And I think this was the first time I've been truly outraged and ashamed of what's been going on in the city. I mean, I showed up to my visioning session for my neighborhood after a thirteen hour day in the field, taped in dust and sweat, in my field clothes. I talked about a lot of those comments, right? I want more commercialization in residential areas. I would like for us to look at different parking strategies. I would like for there to be more goods. I don't have to drive to Kalispell twice a week. And it's deeply discouraging and frustrating that an outside group, special interest group, can come in and just completely erase what me and a lot of other people in this room said. And it's difficult for me to believe that the Community Development Board does not have a specific agenda when it comes to this. I mean, I read that part of Whitefish red line for twenty minutes, and there is so much conjecture, so much unsighted data. There are practically, there are barely any sources or links to what they're claiming. And four members of the board just did not question. They just approved it, added entirely new paragraphs, like, just what I go with just Giuseppe and Steve were saying. In some cases, complete opposites of what the community said. And just as a young person who's just not on a home, who doesn't have the privilege of kind of waiting these things out long term, like, all the young people in this room, like, we need to turn at Whitefish too. Like, the Whitefish of ten or fifteen years ago is not going back. Like, change is going to have to happen. And I would like for council to consider just the behavior of this board and the fact that they have just railroaded public input in this instance and did that specifically in favor of a special interest group. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Rhonda?
Do you want to stand up?
Uh, if you don't mind.
I don't.
If you. Thanks, Rebecca. Thank you.
So, since, uh, since I submitted the version that's at the top of tonight, I would just like to explain that I was asked to be a stakeholder, and I participated in the entire process, wearing two hats, I think. For both, uh, representing the small biz, locally owned small business community and the tourism community. As you know, I own a visitor oriented business. So, I participated with the, with the consultants, a couple of private meetings, a small group meeting, a public meeting. And throughout, I pointed out to them all the mistakes they were making because they were sort of just pulling stuff off the end. They thought Whitefish Mountain Resort had six hundred and fifty full-time employees. They have a hundred and ten. So, over and over, we pointed out all the mistakes they were making, but they were set on a twentieth century form of the economy, which is like anywhere USA, and not even recognizing how individual Whitefish is and how different it is. So, when I was asked to submit comments on the first draft of this, which was just sent to the stakeholders, I sent in comments, but I didn't just send them from one perspective. I talked to Black and Families for Responsible Growth. I talked to Citizens for a Better. I talked to Black and Families for Responsible Growth. I talked to Citizens for a Better Flathead. Uh, I talked to downtown business people. I talked to Explore Whitefish people. I went through all of these comments and tabulated them. And there were exactly six that called for commercial in neighborhoods. And some of them were duplicates, obviously, by the language, from the different ways that you could come online and write their stuff. That was not massive comment for these things. So I submitted um, my comments as a red line version for ease of reference. And I had a cover letter explaining the perspective and I footnoted it. First version had all of that. Then a second version came out, which was put on the website for the public and for the boards. The board had not seen the first draft. And so I submitted a second version with some clarification, a little more inclusion from input I have received from many people. Literally hundreds. I didn't put the footnotes or the cover letter, but they're there on the website. It's just there are a hundred and seventy pages of comments, so you'd have to go to the very beginning. Um, as I said, I tabulated all of these. They do not represent, in my view, the same assumptions that are made there. And I also corrected a lot of data that was wrong. And um, I just want you to know that I was not representing the heart of Whitefish or just myself or a special interest, but I. Took comment from lots of different people, submitted it as one set of comments because it was easier to work through. And I just want you to all understand that. Because it's been characterized as like a special interest greedy business owner, um, you know, old.
Thanks, Rhonda. Who's next?
I'm gonna stand up so I don't like blow maintenance gear off. Uh, hi, I'm Lena. Um. I just wanted to say, as a member of the community, I spend a lot of my time up here in Whitefish and a lot of my money up here. Um. I was sitting here giggling about the idea that people be, can actually buy their necessary items in Whitefish. Because I live in Calispell and I have people ask me to stop at Target on the way up, stop at Costco on the way up. Because they don't want to spend like specialty holistic store money to buy the frigging toothpaste, so like, clearly a lot. Um, that being said, I think that the vote should be a no. At the very least, I'm a member of the public, I can't tell you how to do your job, but at least the vote should be a no. Um, Toby's testimony speaks a lot to that. It sounds like y'all didn't read it. And it sounds like from actual testimony from the people that were in the room, it wasn't right. It doesn't sound like anybody at this table is in argument that these changes are changes. They are clearly changes and. Some of them are very um, factually based. Clearly, review is needed because facts are either facts or they're not facts, right? We like, just I was gonna be either are, I think she said, we are a community of tourism or we're not. Forty percent is not thirty seven percent or whatever it was. So at the very least, these things should be reviewed because. You can't, both can't be right and wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's next?
Um. My name's Marty Brand. I'm at five seventy-five Marbury Road. Um, I wrote out a letter. And I feel like I don't even need to read most of my letter because I feel like all my concerns are being addressed already. Um, I do want to say that I emailed a really long letter to all of you and thank you for suffering through it. It was extremely long. Um, and how long? I don't know what they're gonna think, but uh, thank you. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, and I guess I don't want to go through that point by point again. I really, it wasn't actually meant as a letter to attack one organization. It was. Meant as a letter to trick their concerns. I had addressed those concerns previously in a letter to this board. And as we have seen, only two people voted uh, against this particular draft. For me, that's a little hard because some of the people on the board have a legal background. I guess I thought they would have done a little more digging on that. Um, and I also have heard rumors, I don't know if that's true or not, that people on this Community Development Board are working directly. With organizations making their rewrites. I know that. That is something that there is precedent for in the past, huh? But it doesn't feel true to the Montana Land Use Planning Act, you know, that broad public participation they're pushing for. Uh, and I I don't know if that often involves like a wholesale re-rate of of policy. Um, I think everything else people have mostly covered. Uh, the only thing, I brought a prop. And I do want to show it off because I did, I think this is similar to what Steve's saying, that uh, if we don't have some sort of guidelines for our board. It's gonna, this is just taking forever and it's going to continue to do so. And so I envision the land use policy turning into a who would win. I don't know if you guys have kids, but the soup room's really small. But it takes forever to. Um, and if we all have like different groups submitting land use policy drafts, it's going to turn into a who would win. And it's going to be really tedious and a very extended time.
Nathan Dugan, um, I I I guess I want to address part of Rhonda's comment first because I don't want it to go um. Unrequited, I guess, but respectfully, Rhonda, I think a lot of the groups that you mentioned kind of represent the same interest and um, if you were the same perspective. And um, if you were interested in having different perspectives. Um, you might reach out to me, my organization, for um, a conversation. I mean, I hope you do that at some point in the future. Um, if you're willing, but I think one thing I haven't heard today. Um, about this process and and maybe I missed it, um, that is causing a lot of the ways is um. For lack of a better term, like exhuming things from the grave. So things have been voted on three months ago and. Uh, I don't know what happens. A planning board member gets an email from an organization that they um. Feel um, close to pointing out something and they want to bring a chapter back. You know, that's happened at least once. Maybe multiple times, and I think that that process is an issue. Um, bringing something back that has already been kind of passed on. Um, and this is happening, I think Alan mentioned it, um, at the next meeting with with um, the Butterfolly section that um, had already been looked at and addressed. Now for some reason, um, being brought back to be kind of already over again and and kind of um, tweaked through. Um, and so. I don't know what that means. Potentially, it means that the the board members aren't preparing like they should to look at this stuff the first time through. Um. When they're voting on it initially, um, I think that's the problem, that's what's happening. Uh, I think it would need to go to a court to really determine, but I do think the board has. Done a few things that that have opened the city up to um, legal liability. I think adopting a draft, um, that nobody had time to review because it was a brand new edited version of it. Was shown in the presentation, um, that was presented, um, is problematic. And I know that. There has been discussion and votes taken, uh, you know, maybe votes, votes are binding upon things that weren't publicly noticed on an agenda. Um, to be commented on or published, you know, that another thing that had been devoted on. I think that's problematic. I think these issues kind of hit at the public's right to know and um. If the shoe were on the other foot, I think the city would already have a lawsuit on its hands, to be quite honest. I think that's something to consider. So I think that um. All of that is a little bit problematic. Um. I would like you all, all of you, there, the makeup of the board is the board. Makeup as it currently stands, um, moving this process along and that work get along, uh, well enough. To the work that is supposed to be doing on this, or is it problematic? Uh, I'm not going to tell you. Uh. Which members specifically might be problematic because you might have a different assessment than I do. Um, but I think like, that's kind of where we're at. We we may need to, what they're gonna make of that board makes compared to citizens. Um, so allow this work to kind of go through. Um. I guess I won't be too hurt if it drags on because we have SB two forty-three that just came through the last legislative session, so. If if this keeps pushing on and pushing on and we can't meet deadlines, not only are we going to lose money. Uh, we'll start getting sixty foot buildings popping up downtown and like that personally doesn't hurt me too much. Um, but maybe that's motivating some other people in the rooms to move on forward, so. Uh, that's something to consider as you're going through the process here, so uh, that's all I should say, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Nathan. Additional comments, then we do have to wrap up. If you would like to say for the regular meeting, if you don't have an opportunity to comment now. You can during the public comment period, beginning of the meeting. Richard?
Uh, Richard Hillner, on Port Fifth Street, Whitefish. First thing I'd like to say is that. The heart of Whitefish. Just took information from a wide variety of sources. Uh, individual comments, group comments, organizational comments, and they took the time to. Consolidate those and present it to uh, the planning board or the uh, the Community Development Board. And then the Community Development Board had the opportunity and the responsibility to. Look at that as an option, that red line that you all saw, and. Then make a decision about yes or no, or change it in any way. They said, we like the looks of this and we approve it and voted for it at four two. And now it should be, at this point, I believe, done until. You get the second bite at the apple when the whole thing is put back together again. And I think that's where we need to go with this. And um, that's the role, as I see it, of the Community Development Board. They take the information from planning staff, who's doing a wonderful job, Alan. You should get a big round of applause and a bonus, but that's near here and there. Uh, and and but then take that and then the the Community Development Board has that responsibility to say, yes, no. Change, move on, go to the next element. And do the same thing. And then eventually you will get that package. And I like that idea of both you get a. Clean copy and then if you want to go through as many pages of red ink as you want, you can do that and see what. And then vote on it because that's your responsibility. Thank you.
Would you mind waiting for the regular meeting to come? I apologize, we have about like seven minutes. To get ready for the next term, so with that said, I'm gonna end the work session. We'll be in at seven ten for a minute. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah. He is, he knows he's one of the. I guess, maybe.
You guys ready to roll? Frank, you ready? Folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started, if you don't mind taking your seats, or you're more than welcome to stand. I'm gonna go ahead and call this June second, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for attending in person. We do also have some folks joining us remotely via Zoom. We are gonna start with our pledge of allegiance. Dakota, why don't you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Dakota. I normally don't read this, and I want to bring it to the attention of those in the audience tonight, that. Back in two thousand and seven, the council did adopt principles for civil dialogue. And those are used by all boards, committees, and personnel of the city of Whitefish. And I would just like to briefly reiterate what those rules of engagement are. Because I know a lot of folks are here to comment this evening. We provide a safe environment where individual perspectives are respected, heard, and acknowledged. We are responsible for respectful and courteous dialogue and participation. We respect diverse opinions as a means to find solutions. Based on common ground, we encourage and value broad community participation. We encourage creative approaches to engage public participation. We value informed decision making and take personal responsibility to educate and be educated. We believe that respectful public dialogue fosters healthy community relationships, understanding, and problem solving. We acknowledge, consider, and respect the natural tensions created by collaboration, change, and transition. And finally, we follow the rules and guidelines established for each and every meeting that we hold. So with those in mind, I will take public comment. I would like to invite first members that participated in our work session. If you don't mind, I'll take your comments first, and then we'll go to general public comment.
Thank you for that. And after going to the work session, I want to let everybody know who participated in that, how much I appreciate how hard everybody works on all this. But one of the things that I heard when we were talking about mixed land use is. I'm hearing like there's a need for more commercial mixed with residential. But I'm watching across the country, and even in this valley, how many commercial businesses have closed? Because the patterns of purchasing these days is online. Everybody's ordering everything online. People want underwear, they order them online. We have Walmart, Walmarts now delivering, Costco delivers. And on top of that, we're gonna have Amazon distribution center in Kalispell. That's telling me that a lot of people in this area are ordering, ordering online, which really. Would make me so sad to see urban light in the city if we put a lot of mixed commercial or added a lot of. Commercial space, because I just go downtown Whitefish, and there are a lot of empty spaces there. There are a lot of empty spaces everywhere. And in the stores that we, that were just landmarks on the country landscape are gone. Joanne Shop closed. I don't know how many of you remember her burgers, that's been long gone. A lot of that, the, the, a lot of the reason for local commercial stuff. Is kind of going away with the online stuff, and I want that to be considered as part of this mixed land use concept. Are we gonna end up with a lot of empty buildings? Because since COVID, more and more and more people are adopting that online, I'm gonna buy it online. And young people buy it online. It's harder for me to, you know, my daughter always says, well, just get it online, Mom. And I'm used to like, I want to go touch and feel stuff. But that seems to be the trend of the future. And that, I think, needs to be a consideration before a lot more commercial is added. Because if you're talking about normal, regular things with all these other places delivering and an Amazon distributions, I don't. Know that I particularly like it, but I think it is the wave of the future. And it's something that we need to consider in our growth plan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Whitney Beckham, Luffler Avenue here in Whitefish. And thank you for the meeting just prior to this. Um, it was well attended, as was our last community development board meeting. I want to assure members, members of council and members of public that we are taking this seriously. We do read all of the material and um. Our direction from MLUPA was to prepare. So that's what we're attempting to do, is to prepare, prepare this document. Um, Alan's doing a wonderful job. And we are trying really hard to incorporate all public comments. We now have three public comment sections in all of our working groups. And I just want to assure everyone that we are listening and we're preparing. So we thank you for your direction and everything that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney. Thanks for your work as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Michael Heine, six twelve Luffler. Um, when one of the appointed boards. Adopts whole cloth, the recommendations of one specific business interest in the city. That in, that appears to be a problem. When a fifteen year veteran of the planning process resigns because it's not working, that seems to be a problem too. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Heberling, forty two Crane Marsh Way, Whitefish. And we just sat through an hour and a half meeting, and I am really struck by how. Very seriously, every single member of the council has taken all these issues. I'm, I wish we could have continued for another five hours and maybe ironed out. Many of them, but we will be doing that over the next months. Uh, I want to say a couple of things. I went back to MLUPA. And uh, the council. And the uh, planning board, citizens development board have. Different duties, they have separate duties. Uh, the, the uh, planning board, MLUPA uses the words planning commission. Uh, has specific duties, and they have hundred percent of those duties. They must do them. So, and one of the duties is to prepare a growth plan. Uh. Also, it said we must propose a growth plan. And then in two one point one. Only after consideration by and on the recommendation of the planning commission. Only then does the uh, city council adopt, revise, or reject. The uh, work of the planning board. So I thought it'd be good to clear that up a little bit. Then I did something after the last meeting, I do it for my own benefit, I recap the arguments. And I will send them to you. Um, I would love to go through all of them. There are, but i- it's called six ways, the heart of Whitefish version of the economic development goals and objectives. Improves on the planning staff version. The heart of Whitefish version largely embraces uh, the work of the staff. But there are substantial uh, uh, changes. So there's six changes. First is no. I'm losing my voice. Uh, for no to.
Oh, sorry, I was like, wow, that's kind of.
I'm old and I. So no to adding seven hundred and twenty new business kinds. The uh, staff version had a goal of providing a full range of goods and services. That means, a full range means a hundred percent. And this goes back to the consultant's report, table five, where they found seven hundred and twenty. Business kinds, Whitefish was lacking. So by continuing to propose this full range of goods and services. It means all seven hundred and twenty is the vision of the staff for the next twenty years. Well, that would be rapid, rapid growth, and that's one of the objections. The staff has never changed this language, so the uh. Uh, part of Whitefish version took that out. Second one is yes to moderate growth, no to rapid growth. So uh, the staff version can be viewed as proposing rapid growth, as I just discussed. And the uh, heart of Whitefish version um, says yes to moderate growth. And the visioning sessions were really clear on this. I went to two nights in a row when people were playing with their uh iPhones and voting on things. And one question uh, was what is the biggest threat to Whitefish? And uh, the staff uh, has put these into font size um, displays. So affordability was first, traffic was second, growth was third. But then there were two more called development and sprawl of about a slightly larger, uh, smaller size. If you add those, perhaps growth is the greatest concern of the people at those visioning sessions. I didn't hear anyone uh complaining that the growth was not rapid enough. And so these people are saying that they want growth a little less than what they've seen. And so um, the uh, heart of uh. Heart of Whitefish version uh, goes to uh, moderate growth. And no to box stores. Uh, as Al mentioned, there was almost no support for big box stores in Whitefish. And yet the staff version says regulate big box retail. That means letting it in and then trying to rate, regulate it. It's a slippery slope.
John, with all due respect, I appreciate the comments, but we're, we're familiar with the changes that were made. With all due respect, and I think this would be more appropriately discussed at your community development board meeting, if you don't mind.
I, I realize these meetings get really long.
They can be. But thanks very much for your service on the board. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Hey, everyone, my name is Lena Galas. Um, I used to live in Whitefish. I would like to, but I cannot afford it. So I live in Columbia Falls, and my address is fourteen forty seven eleventh Street West. Um, so I'm here as a community organizer with Flathead Democracy. Um, I think like from everything I heard in the last meeting, you guys really understand the gist of like the conflict, you know, that's taken place or that's come to. Ahead in um, the, the content of this um. Report. And so um, I think I just wanted to point out, you know, um, we're having, I look at a lot of national politics, but I also look at local politics, right? Because it's really important, this is where we live. Um, our kids go to school, we recreate and live here. Live our daily lives. Um, and so, you know, an oligarch, or an oligarchy. Is a government in which a small group of people exercise control, especially for corrupt and selfish purposes. Um, that's different from a representative democracy, which accounts for and honors the perspective of all its constituents. And so, you know, without going into great detail, I actually think that that is sort of presented to you here, which is, you know, what kind of. Government is the Whitefish City government. Um, and obviously, our name and our organization is Flathead Democracy, so you can understand what our interests are. Um, as an organization that works across the Flathead. Um, and we really just want to put the kind of like political power and um. We want to empower people, working people, working families. There was a public input process that was like, from what I understand, really well done. Um, from the city's perspective, and so, you know, our question is like, well, is the heart of Whitefish conducting the public input process again? Or was the public input process done by the city? Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena. Who's next?
Hey there, my name's Stephen Butters. Just one thing I wanted to bring up really briefly, and this you can look up statistics wise online easily. Um, tourism at the border is actually down twenty percent right now since January, and we've lost out on four hundred thousand dollars in our community in total currently. Um, again, you can look these statistics up online, this is just something to consider with what was just discussed. Uh, whether or not consideration needs to be laid out on the tourism industry in total right now, or if other things with more longevity need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dakota.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. My name is Dakota Whitman, I live at nine three seven Kalispell Avenue. And I just wanted to briefly expand on a couple of points I wasn't able to in the work session. My first is I'd like to argue against this point that a singular person can claim that they represent hundreds of people. I believe that this is fundamentally anti-democratic and privileges certain people over others. If we posit that a member of Heart of Whitefish or Citizens for a Better Flathead, or any organization can have their voices heard by one person. Then we are placing these people in inherently privileged position. That means that these people don't have to write comment, they don't have to show up, they don't have to fill out a survey, but their voices are considered to be heard. But if you are a member of the community who's not a part of these groups and you still do those things, your voice is considered not heard. So I would urge that if these groups claim that their members are very concerned about these issues. They need to show up as individuals and write and participate like everyone else in the community does. This is supposed to be a democratic process, so it needs to be one person, one voice. And very briefly, I'd like to point out two edits Heart of Whitefish made that were not mentioned in the work session, that I think really display. You know, why I just can't believe that this was critically assessed as a document. The first one is that they claim that the median per capita rent is eight hundred a month, and they say Housing Whitefish has a data source for that. That number came from Hard, from Housing Whitefish's number that an average two bedroom apartment is seventeen hundred a month. And Heart of Whitefish assumed that every two bedroom apartment has two people equally splitting the rent. That is not true, that is not an accurate number. Housing Whitefish will tell you that's not an accurate number. And I think that shows a lack of acumen in data interpretation and data analysis. If we want this to be a data driven process, this needs to be conducted by people who know how to ask and interrogate data sources. Not blindly believe it from a source that they're preferential to. And last point I'd like to hit is that uh. Heart of Whitefish claims with no evidence, no source, nothing backing this claim up. That the housing crisis quote unquote may reverse because of remote workers going back to the office. COVID ended four or five years ago, there is no mythical tranche of remote workers that are gonna leave and save us for million dollar houses. If claims like these are gonna be made, there needs to be sources to back them up. We need this to be a data driven process if we want this to work. This cannot be based on people just saying things and then it being believed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dakota.
Good evening, my name is Terry Falk, F A L K. I'm a elected representative in House District Ten in Kalispell, Montana. Uh, would you like, I, I've not presented here before, would you like my physical address?
If you don't mind, just.
I don't mind at all.
For the record.
No problem. Fifty seven Zach Joe Place, Kalispell, Montana.
Thanks, Terry.
Sure. Um, also, one more procedural question, is this where I would comment on the Border Patrol, Whitefish City Police? Is, is the open comment for basically anything?
Yes.
Okay, very good, didn't want to speak out of turn. Uh, so that's the issue that I'm referring to, and I just want to make a couple of comments. I noticed a lot of people in the room have gray hair like me, so um, probably they were raised with parents who. Placed a high value on law and obedience, obedience to the law and um. Understanding that we need to face consequences when we don't obey the law. Uh, I'm concerned about our society somewhat, uh, this is not necessarily a comment on Whitefish, but just in general, where we. Uh, somehow, some, some time, for some reason, the good guys seem like they've turned into the bad guys. And sometimes it seems like the bad guys have turned into the good guys, and I'm just concerned about potential chaotic consequences of that. And I have a profound uh, respect for what you guys do. Um, I understand what position you're in. Uh, certainly not here to tell you uh, what to do, and not that I could. Um, but I understand that you have to take uh, a real good look at what is happening and how to respond to that. I think it would be a mistake at this point to apologize for doing something that I believe is. is the right thing in this case. I feel like also as elected officials, it's so important that we take into consideration the safety and the peace and the prosperity and the protection of our citizens and our residents. Just because we have a free society, of course, doesn't mean we have the freedom to do whatever we want. We need to live within bounds. So I would just say, don't apologize for doing our job, for doing the right thing, and this is how we maintain a good society that's not chaotic. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Terry.
Howdy, y'all. Transseemore, Kalispell, Montana. I'm a Flathead native. That was an interesting comment. I just, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time on the whole Castillo Rodriguez thing other than the fact that there's no way it wasn't racially motivated. There was no reason to call the Border Patrol on this guy. He had all of his ducks in a row, he did all of his papers in a row. I know it seems to be the contention of this board, that there was no racial motivation whatsoever, but the vast majority of the community seems to view that otherwise. So maybe we can just reevaluate from there as, you know, these fiascos continue to incite. The key arguments for this economic development plan involved things like, do we want to encourage new businesses to relocate here? Should we encourage businesses to typically pay higher wages? Does Whitefish have a balanced economy? Who are we asking these questions to? That's kind of something that I'm really curious about, because I can tell you right now that these questions aren't really being asked with a lot of the locals and residents in mind. I'll give you an example. When I was growing up here, I remember a lot of my mom and dad's friends saying things like, we don't really like the direction that Whitefish and the Flathead is growing and evolving. It's getting too hoity-toity. We're going to move to Eureka, or Libby, or Great Falls. And what they did is they took themselves out of the conversation. And when they took themselves out of the conversation, their places were filled by people from out of town who had the money to come here and start making this place what they wanted it to be. And that still happens all the time. People just remove themselves from the conversation because they don't like the way the conversation is going, rather than engaging in the conversation itself. And that is something that I see more and more, a lot of community members are getting kind of tired of doing, seeing happen. I think it's amusing that we're asking, is targeting primary job generating businesses and more goods and services accelerating growth? First of all, the key word here, or key phrase here, I think, is like primary job, because that indicates that in order to live here, one must have more than one job. We also said that 76% of the people in Whitefish don't live here. Why? It's because we can't afford to live here anymore. I drive by the house that I grew up in, and it's been all but diminished to a fraction of what it was when my family owned it. And if it were to go on the market right now for rent, I can guarantee we'd be paying five times more than what my parents were paying on their mortgage. So I don't really understand, like, who these questions are being directed towards. It doesn't mean that we don't want to live here, it means that we can't. The report that you guys put out, it said it was sent to 28 agencies. Who are the stakeholders in those agencies? I did see a lot of frowns coming from over there when people were objecting, so I'm just going to make assumptions based on that. I won't voice them, but I'll just keep them in my pocket. Tourism is half of the economy, but also who is that benefiting? Because it's clearly not the workforce who supports that tourism agency. Regarding the red marks, which I thought were just exemplary here, the red marks, we are revised to indicate locals who choose to drive out of town for necessary goods, removes language regarding deficit and affordable goods and services for locals. I'm not going to read all of these, but, so, if we vote, if we approve on that, what y'all are essentially voting for is you are removing truths. We're removing language from the website that states the truths of the economy that we live in, the environment that we live in, that yes, we do have to drive to Kalispell to get underwear. I'm sure there are people that come here who come with all of their underwear already packed. But, like, why are we removing languages that can allow businesses who come here to better understand the economic environment in which they are about to start fostering, so that they can better foster the community in which they are a part of? To me, that seems like a no-brainer. I don't understand why we would remove the warning labels, when warning labels are specifically put in place to prevent stupid people from making stupid decisions. And I don't want anybody on this board, let alone anybody over here or in my community, to be a part of this stupid group of people making stupid decisions. Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for hosting this, and thanks to Alan. I know he has a huge job trying to decipher Emlopa and incorporate that. Same to the Community Development Board. It's a huge task, and of course comes with a lot of contentions. I'm here to support the Heart of Whitefish. They, I think, did a great job incorporating comments, and they were a stakeholder. The comments were, we, as I understand, able to be reviewed by the public, and they shared them again at the meeting. I also want to note that CBF, as a representative of, I'm sorry, Cameron Dexter, 309 Hawthorne Avenue, Kalispell, as a representative of Citizens for a Better Flathead, we do submit our comments, not always on time by the deadline, I'm sure Alan wishes I did, but we do submit those comments, just like everyone else, and we do read through them. I want to note that we are trying to figure out where and how we can view the individual stakeholder comments that come in. I know there's a whole list of people, and I submitted a FOIA for the public comments, but I have yet to see those, and maybe that's being worked on. And we just want to promote that we need transparency as we go through this process, because there's going to be a lot of public comment, there's going to be a lot of different viewpoints, but in order to come to a solution that we can all benefit from, I think it's really important that we all have a chance to view public comments that have been submitted ahead of time before the meeting, so we can all incorporate those. So thank you so much. I hope you have a good evening.
Thanks, Kim.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for all the work you do, everybody in here. I was shocked to see you move from that meeting immediately into this meeting. I had no idea. My name is Drew Rafkin. I used to live in Whitefish. Now I live at 723 Fifth Avenue East in Kalispell, because I can afford it. I'm gonna possibly sound like the person that you think is exaggerating and saying the sky is falling, and maybe a year from now, if you remember what I say, you won't think that. I'm really concerned about how the City Council and the Border Patrol and the Police Department work together. And the reason for that is, right now, friends of mine who are Latino are being targeted because that's what's being directed from above. My husband, who is not Latino, who's a naturalized citizen, has left the country and doesn't know if he's going to come back because he's afraid to be here, because he doesn't feel protected. He doesn't feel like he will be served with justice if the tides turn to his nationality. Maybe that's all I have to say. It's very frightening. And as somebody who grew up with nobody past my great-grandparents who were left alive, and my husband's family who escaped the Communist Revolution, and everybody that they left died, this doesn't feel safe. So I'm asking you to think about that, because someday, they're going to target somebody else. And if it's me, or my husband, or if it's one of you for some odd reason, although most people here are white, and like me, I can hide for a while, but my husband can't hide, and his side of the family can't hide, and my friends who are here can't hide. So what do they do? Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Good evening. I'm Ron Gerson, former resident of Whitefish and now retired to 9 Fourth Avenue East in Kalispell. Thanks for allowing me to address you. I've known most of you, or at least known of you in one capacity or another for many years, and I haven't much intervened in your proceedings over the years, but tonight I feel compelled to appeal to you on two intertwined issues, which are extremely near and dear to my heart. I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for the generosity and spirit of this country in opening its arms to welcome immigrants, in my case, two young people fleeing the oppressive Nazi regime. Those two immigrants who met, married, and begat, my sister and I, held a deeply profound respect and reverence for the democratic principles on which this country was founded. And I have no doubt they're not just rolling in their graves, they're spinning at high velocity with what's happening in their adopted country. Even my low-profile father, I'm sure, would be at all the rallies and protests, and that's a large part of what inspires me as well. The government of the City of Whitefish must ensure that civil rights are preserved, that due process is respected, that everyone in this community is treated with respect and protected. There's no room for turning a blind eye to events in the comfort that it's happening to someone else. That's what happened in Germany in the '30s, and that could happen, indeed is happening, in the USA of today. And then, there was no one left to stand up for me when they came for me. Whitefish as a community has a history of gathering around, supporting and protecting those neighbors who are being attacked. This must not stop now. If indeed you have the intention to make sure that this attitude persists, in fact, as well as in spirit, you have an obligation to ensure that all parts of your government act in unison and clarity to achieve the same objective. There's no room for equivocation, for doublespeak, for hypocrisy, for obfuscation. Clarity is the order of the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
It's a doubleheader for me. Liana Galaz, resident of Columbia Falls. I'm going to play a video really quick and turn up the sound, so you can hear what happens. I haven't committed a crime.
No! What are you guys doing?
I want to talk with my lawyer. You need to let me review the warrant. That's them breaking the glass of a car window.
You just cannot take her!
Don't worry. Don't worry. Calm down. Don't worry, my love. Everything's going to be okay. Be careful.
I'm in park.
Yeah, it's in park. Put your cell phone to your daughter so you can get out, because there's glass. Now I'm going to keep my phone. Slowly, slowly, be careful. No. Now they're handcuffing her.
Everything's going to be fine.
I trust you could hear that. What you just heard is the detainment of Noemi Berrios in Maryland by ICE with no warrant, breaking the glass of her car while her daughter cried for her mother. Noemi has no criminal record, she's an asylum seeker from El Salvador. Under the ICE Alternatives Detention Program, she has current work authorization. DHS alleges she's associated with the MS-13 gang, but there's no detention order, and there is no evidence provided by DHS to support that claim. This is similar to our community member, Bakerr Renjifo del Castillo. When he was detained by ICE, there was no warrant, no evidence that he had broken any laws, and still to this day, no charges have been filed against him. I'm Mexican-American. I'm Latina. Exhibit A. My shirt says it, so it must be true. I live here. I see what's happening with very clear eyes. The people of Whitefish tell me how much they love my culture, music, food, art, language. You love for us to cook your food, take care of your kids, build your houses, serve your food, clean your houses, work at your businesses, but the minute we demand equality, no, that's too much. We are people. We are human, and we are good for more than just being your servants. We demand that you honor our rights to due process under the law and our rights to equal protection. Stop pretending like the Border Patrol magically appeared. Border Patrol is acting on the direction of an authoritarian regime that is implementing racist immigration policies to pander to its political base, and it's working. Is that what we want to be a part of? Many of you agree that what's happening isn't right. I've heard you say it, people in this room. So if you don't believe that this is right, be part of stopping it happening in our community. We demand the City of Whitefish immediately cease contacting or collaborating with Border Patrol for any interactions that do not involve potential felony-level violent crimes. We demand to see the training materials and programs in place for Whitefish PD regarding racial bias in policing. We also demand an investigation into the actions of Officer Hingis and disciplinary action as appropriate. We demand to see the training materials for Whitefish Immigration Matters and demand that officers undergo regular training and frequent training that's sufficient for identifying lawful immigration status, so they don't need to rely on contacting Border Patrol to do so. We demand an apology from Chief Kelcher and from the Whitefish City Council, to Mr. Bakerr Renjifo del Castillo and the entire community for not adequately prioritizing this issue, nor sufficiently educating and training officers in order to prevent the irreparable harm that took place and should never, ever have occurred. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena.
Hi, my name is Liana Camaro. I am not Liana. I know, that's confusing to some people. I didn't know what I was going to say today. Liana said a lot of it, and I am speaking because I'm tired of letting other people speak for me, as is obvious by the fact that me and Liana regularly get mistaken for each other all the time. We are two of the most visible brown people in this valley. I'm afraid in Whitefish. Some of you guys know me, and that's why I'm here to talk. I have to think about what my hair looks like before I go into the stores. I don't normally look like this. I normally have my hair up, jacket on, looking as white as possible, because racial profiling exists in this town. I know you guys want to think that it doesn't. I don't want it to either, but you guys are in the very unique position to be able to do something about that. I can't make myself safer, I can't make my kids safer, but you guys can. You guys can ask for an investigation, you guys can release the body cam footage that we know exists. There's a lot that you guys can do. I'm afraid in your town, and you guys know me. How do you guys think that other people feel? People that don't have friends, that are regularly in these meetings, or my pack of friends in the back right now? If you want to think that your town is safe for brown people, my Blackfeet friend was raped in your parking structure. Please do the job that we can't do. You guys are the ones that can do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena.
Switch out to the reading glasses. Hello, my name is Rebecca Miller. I'm from Kalispell, Montana, and I am an immigration advocate here in the valley. I was last here to talk to you two weeks ago, and I thank you for the opportunity to do so again. When I came last to speak to you, I had read the police report from Mr. Renjifo del Castillo's traffic stop. Having read it, I couldn't believe that much of the City Council, as did, spoke with such certainty that the matter was closed. Nobody ever has racial bias in the Whitefish Police Department, and nothing was improper in the stop. Now that everyone has had an opportunity to read the police Now that everyone has had an opportunity to read the police report, because it was in the newspaper this week, and so I certainly hope that everyone has read it by now, you can see that it doesn't describe any reason for Border Patrol to be called, that I can see. There was, before it was released, it was like there was this curtain in front of it and sort of this implication, there must be some awful secret that it's hiding, and you get it, and it's not that at all. The police officer described an irregular but legal car registration that Becker spoke Spanish, seemed nervous, but turns out to have been an accurate way to respond to considering what happened. He had his driver's license, insurance, and car registration, he was stopped for a broken taillight, we know these facts by now. There was no reason, though, the police report shows, to presume that he was violating immigration law, nor was that really the business or jurisdiction of city police. As I noted in my last time, once a call was made to CBP, a domino effect is triggered, and the police officer loses control of what happens next. What happened next was terrifying, we know that, he was deprived of his liberty for a week. At the end of the last city council, several of you had a lot of concern for the police officer and compassion for how he may be feeling. Yet I didn't hear much about the, what it might feel like to go and be locked up in an ICE facility for six days. That's gotta feel pretty bad. I'm not here to say that Officer Hingis is a Klansman, or, I mean, he's probably a pretty nice guy. I don't know, I don't know him. But the thing is, is that we all, white people like me, grow up with our brains imprinted with the stuff of unconscious bias. I'm a white person, it was imprinted on me too, and every day I have to stop and resist it and try to be a better person. The issue here is the impact that nice people can have, their decisions can have. So, I will wrap it up and just ask again, will the city please provide the public with the content of the training that officers receive on what constitutes reasonable suspicion or probable cause of a criminal immigration violation? Again, as I said last time, I understand you can't give me a list of like 10, 15 things, and it's only gonna be these 10, 15 things, I understand there's a spectrum of things. I wanna understand what police officers are being trained in, and if they are being trained in it, then it is a coherent thing. And then I will ask that the city will stop calling CBP. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Hey guys, I'm back. First off, my apologies, this is my first time being here today, so this time I'll give my address as well. Again, that's Stephen Butters, my address is 1035 Oakmont Lane, Columbia Falls. Regarding the second topic, I spoke initially on the first, this is specific to the second that we're addressing now. I'd like to just start with, my whole family's been involved in everything from military to federal law enforcement, to city law enforcement, my entire life and before. My grandfather, my dad's dad, was involved in the landing on Iwo Jima. He was on the second ship, and I would say the third ship, but the second ship sunk. He was given the same medal that the captain was for communicating the rescue of that second ship. My whole family has been staunch Americans, conservative Democrat, you name it, but we stand here for America. I have done anti-human trafficking work with my father in Seattle. I know more about gangs and what's going on here than I came here knowing about ICE's actions, if I'm being honest. I'm at the point where not only is my father, who has worked for the US government in various routes and places my entire life and most of his, wants me out of the country, but he also no longer stands for what this government is doing. Regarding Bakar's detainment, I have read the police reports. I've done my own research and all kinds of stuff elsewhere, outside of the state. So, things that caught my attention were things that differentiated from various accounts we received. The first ones being that Border Patrol was not needed for translation. In the police report itself, it states that Border Patrol there actually assisted in the translation. It's in the second page. Another portion is that Border Patrol was called, according to the police report, not for the translation. We don't know whether or not that's what happened, we don't have the body cam footage. But it does say, or say, that they were called because there is an immigration violation problem in the Flathead Valley. Now, courtesy of my mom's side, I speak a little bit of Croatian, including some insults and other jazz. I can say, for just clarity's sake, I have gone through blasting Nordic and Slavic music. I have insulted people in Croatian, I've spoken Croatian, I've never once had anything checked. The only difference between Bakar and I is I'm white, I'm very white, I glow in the sunlight. So, anyway, that's, that was the second topic I wanted to broach, and thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Stephen.
I, I'm Jenny Padlo, I live at 476 Labree Drive, Whitefish. I am in support of law enforcement tonight. I wrote something out, it's, I'm gonna read it. But before I read it, I just wanna say about, like, my personal experience with several police officers in this community is nothing but huge heart and care. And I have had to call the police more than I ever thought I would have to. And I have been just astonished at the integrity. I, I'm just really impressed with what I've experienced, and so, it's hard for me to hear this stuff. So, okay, I address you today regarding recent protests and demands concerning my detention of, can I just call him Becker? These are my beliefs, and I go back kinda deep because after my school board experience, where I wrote a very nasty letter to the school board, which was actually a form of reactive abuse. I was, I felt very abused when I went through that meeting, and many things were lied about. Anyways, I'm, I'm over it, it's behind me, but it caused me to start paying attention deeply to the activist community in Whitefish, and I think it's a danger. I think it's a danger to the fabric, I think it's a poison. And so, what the activists are doing today over this issue, and it could be any issue, they are conflating what they call concerns with actual unlawful violations. They sent out a prompt to their associates to guide communication at this meeting. In that prompt they write, "We still have not been told twice. Absent this information, and we are concerned." So they admit they are missing facts to make a determination. Creatively, they leverage the absence of facts to justify a concern, a concern, and then claim this abstract concern justifies concrete demands. Theirs is a podcast-level amateur investigation, when they don't have the authority to pursue. Because they don't have authority, they counterfeit authority through implied virtue in the word concern. They imbue a maximum amount of virtue on their concern, which then justifies basically anything they want. In this case, it's subversion of law enforcement. Also implied in their concern is the demand that we must all accept the premise their position is of moral superiority, though no, no position of moral superiority has ever come to exist through a ceaseless fabrication of facts. This is not about Becker, it's a power play. And a response gives them the power struggle they desperately need to launder themselves into legitimacy. Now I'm gonna go into something that's a little deeper and historical and possibly offensive, but I feel like this community needs to discuss it. Furthermore, it's important to acknowledge the broader context in which these events are unfolding. In 2016, Whitefish faced a situation where an injustice was used to legitimize actions by an activist group appearing to be random citizens opposing white supremacy. This group went on to target members of the community who oppose or challenge any Democrat positions for nearly the next decade, well after the paper tiger of white supremacy in this community was shredded. They exploited the incidents, the incident to launder themselves into a social position of authority, essentially a gang of self-deputized thought police roving around town, community forums, influencing politics with bombastic conviction, a young cavity in a tooth, so to speak. The current situation with Becker bears striking similarities. The same group, or their ideological successors, appears to be leveraging this incident to regain influence and deepen control over the community's political and cultural landscape. Their tactics involve manufacturing crises to rally support and delegitimize opposing viewpoints. I urge the council to observe what the activists are attempting to do with Becker's situation, not as a standalone event, but as a continuation of the local cultural rot this group seeded in 2016. Two rots don't make a right. As they attack law enforcement in Whitefish, the decay they initiated years ago endeavors to deteriorate our systems by demanding the council bend to their will and actively assist in undermining law enforcement. Some council members have shown fear and indicated submissive inclinations to these activists. Council members are being battered with a set of false facts, intense dishonest virtue signaling, and lots of emotion meant to signal counterfeit conviction cloaked in fever pitch urgency designed to cause dysregulation and chaos this group requires to thrive. The council should resist all pressure to adopt or entertain a false set of facts in order to subdue this beast. The activist group, who I affectionately, I affectionately call the Peanut Gallery, signals a confidence that the council will comply based on the history that the council has benefited from their social intimidation and oppression of political opposition. And they interpret this as a currency for the council, perhaps even a debt to them, because there has been nearly a decade void of meaningful political pushback in Whitefish. This is because conservatives fear being smeared as racists or bigots, which I most certainly will be after reading this. At any rate, they appear to believe they derived a counterfeit authority stemming from the 2016 incident that they now wield against the council itself. To engage this hard-left activist group is to sign a death warrant for Whitefish, it is nihilism. Any engagement on their terms, their false facts, is legitimizing them once again, only this time, not just as thought police.
You, you did read from our rules for civil dialogue, and this is violating it in many different ways. I agree. Please wrap up if you don't mind.
Sure. This time, not as thought police, this time it will be at the expense of our just, upright, honest, caring, lawful, hard-working-
I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut this off, ma'am.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I just want you all to see how it's a continuation of activism.
Good evening, my name's Kim Morisaki. I live at 1329 Bald Eagle Loop in Kalispel. I hadn't, I'm just here to actually talk to you about some affordable housing. But, I, as I was listening to this, I thought, I have some own personal experiences, a, a white girl from the Flathead Valley who's been here for five generations. I actually lived in Japan for 11 years and have a lot of experience being the foreigner on a work visa who stands out in every situation and also didn't speak Japanese very well. And while I lived in Japan, I had a work visa and then I got married, that's where I got that crazy last name, and married a Japanese guy and got a visa to live there. There were plenty of Americans who were not there, who overstayed their work visas, shall we say. The thing that happened in Whitefish is so tragic. And the reason I wanted to talk with you about it is because if I had been living in Japan and what happened to Becker had happened to me, living in Japan as a foreigner who stood out and couldn't speak Japanese, it, it would have ruined my feelings about Japan forever. And I think that it was happening as regularly in Japan as what is happening now in the United States. There would have been a huge outcry from the American government about what was happening to American citizens in Japan, the way they were being treated. Fortunately, none of that happened. And I married a Japanese guy and convinced him to move to Montana with me about, gosh, 23 years ago. And about 20 years ago, he became a United States citizen, and, great. The problem is, he's bald, he works, he, he's a contractor, he's got a goatee, and he could just as easily look like he is from Mexico or South America as he looks like he's from Japan. And his English isn't that great, although he does get by. I am terrified for him. I make him carry his passport with him everywhere he goes. And that shouldn't be the way anybody who lives and works in this community should have to feel. So, I just wanted to share that perspective with you. My husband and I are invited to a friend's wedding in Mexico. We're not going because I'm afraid what it would take for us to get back into the country. So, just a little more food for thought as you're thinking about how Whitefish is represented in this situation. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Kim.
Hello, my name is Patty Johnson, 405 Blanchard Lake Drive, Whitefish. I also wanna speak about what happened with Becker. And, but first I wanna say that I too support our law enforcement, I've had great interactions with them. I support our city council, and I believe wholeheartedly in those aspects of respectful dialogue that you talked about at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor. And I think this is an ongoing conversation, and that are, it would be wise for all of us to just keep talking about these kinds of issues. I am a longtime educator. I have worked in schools for a long time, from preschool all the way up to high school. And at my current job, we talk to the kids a lot about the concept of growth mindset. I'm sure most of you have heard or read about growth mindset before. And the idea is, with growth mindset, is that we want to have brains that grow, not brains that are fixed. And one of the big tenets of growth mindset is how we view mistakes. A person with a fixed mindset is going to dig in when a mistake is made. And they're just gonna dig in, they're gonna shut down, and they're not gonna want to talk about that mistake, often because they feel shame, or they feel like they did something wrong. And something we try to really instill in our students is that mistakes are opportunities for growth. And isn't that exciting? That that is the way our brains actually grow. And I'd like to kind of apply this to this situation with Becker. We can either have fixed mindsets, and we can all say, everything we did, everything we've done is just what it is, and we're not gonna talk about it anymore, and we're gonna pull a curtain down, and we're not gonna share anything and not going to engage in a lot of dialogue. Or, we can say, hey, this is an opportunity for growth. This is an opportunity for us, as a community, to grow and to share and to listen respectfully to different viewpoints, which I like to think that I'm a person that's pretty open to different viewpoints. And, I, when we talk to kids about this, I always think that I'm asking an awful lot from kids because it's really easy to just omit something or not be really clear about something and, and let assumptions just stand. And yet, I feel like I need to live my life, professional and personal life, in a way that honors what I'm asking kids to do. We tell kids honesty is the most important thing, being open is the most important thing. And the fact is, we all, every single one of us makes a mistake at work and in our personal lives, but we're gonna talk about work right now. We all make mistakes at work, probably on the daily. Some of them are big, some of them are small. We often have opportunities to correct that, and I think that it's really important for us to have the integrity and the ethics to be able to talk more openly about something that happened and to take corrective actions if that are, those are needed. I don't think, I'm gonna make an analogy to something that happens in the medical field, there's a lot of research that shows that if- There's a lot of research that shows that if doctors just say what they actually did and apologize for it, they are much less likely to get sued for that. I think we have a lot of big-hearted people, both in the council, the police department, all the other departments, and in the community in Whitefish, and if we're open about our dialogue, I think that that will progress us and help us grow a lot more. Obviously, all I have to go from is the report that was in the Daily Inner Lake about what happened, but when I read something that says there are a lot of issues with immigration in the Flathead County as a reason or an explanation about how things progressed, that reads to me as bias. Obviously, I would love to engage more and listen more to a dialogue around that, but that will take transparency from the police department, from the council, to really kind of dig into those things and to be able to have more conversations around it. The other thing I just want to say on the land use and the growth policies is, this is just an anecdote, but I went into Sportsman's the other day. So I live in Whitefish, I have a 10-year-old. I went into Sportsman's because he lost his soccer shorts, and he had soccer practice or a soccer game, and I needed shorts like now. And I looked around and all I could see was kids bathing suits. There were no other kids clothes. So I said to the people at Sportsman's, are you gonna get some more kids clothes in? And they said, no, we're not, because everybody goes to Kalispell. And I said, well, we have to go to Kalispell if there's no kids clothes in Whitefish. So I would really encourage the council to think about expanding businesses that actually help those of us who live in Whitefish as opposed to having great stock just for tourists. Thanks.
Thanks, Patty.
Cameron Dexter, 309 Hawthorne Avenue, and I'm gonna speak as a private citizen now. To be honest, I did not know enough about this situation before these folks came and spoke, but I will tell you that I'm a lawyer, and though I do not practice, I did endure way too many years of civil procedure and crime and immigration, and this is not a new thing. There is always police brutality, there is always people doing the wrong thing, and especially in this time and this age under this administration, we cannot support it. We cannot turn a blind eye, and I think that you need to show up for the people in this community and support the people that came here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the perfect intro. I live here, and I am concerned. I also do usually carry my passport around with me now. Sorry, my voice is shaking. I got pretty heated listening to some things, but I came here mostly to listen. I also looked into, just like word on the street, what was the paper saying about this situation, what was reasonable concern. I have pretty good research skills, could not find it. And, oh, sorry, I'm Isabella Brown. I live over on Colorado, across from the Aqueduct. Sorry. But I was mostly intending to listen, but I did hear some things that I do think would be great. A, full transparency, love it. Also, yeah, in this environment, you know, I have a privilege of being a veteran, but like I still have never had the privilege of calling the cops and thinking that they were gonna be friendly. So in my experience, the fact that he was nervous, duh, totally, that makes sense. Anytime the lights turn on, even if it's not for me, I know that I'm doing okay and I get nervous. That's a real thing. So I want to say, like, the impact to nice people, I think I'm pretty nice, and I do think it's impacting me, because I do know whenever I go, I, full disclosure, I do do voter registration, it is nonpartisan, but whenever I go out of town to do it, to Kalispell or Columbia Falls, I usually try to come back before dark, because I know, like, you know, affordable housing is a big factor. I didn't, I had a taillight out and I couldn't afford to pay for it until the next paycheck, so I was just trying to make sure to come home early so I wouldn't get stopped, because I knew it was gonna be a whole thing, even if it was just my stress levels. It was gonna be scary, and I didn't want that. I don't have the privilege, I work two jobs, I can't spend a week in detention while they just sort things out. I, I, you know, maybe it's just my algorithm as a Hispanic woman to get it, but I do get stories to where I see people who are getting cavity searched, and they're like military spouses, like, that's insane. And I personally cannot afford that trauma in my life. So it sucks that I have to have this extra stress upon my regular stress. Like, it's, I'm respectfully, I don't see a lot of brown faces up here, so I'm just gonna let you know, from the perspective of somebody who is right across, right across the way, living here and just trying to survive in my one red room condo with my partner and two dogs, it would be great if y'all could put in some implicit bias training, because I can't afford that smoke. I just, I would love, I would love for y'all to just do it, even if you don't think it's gonna do much, it would be great. And yes, you should apologize, because respectfully, y'all did fumble it. Like, that was pretty clear in the public outcry. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but have a good day.
Hi, my name's Danielle Tuie. I don't live in Whitefish anymore, I live in the county. However, we own the subway in Whitefish, also all the subways across the valley besides Evergreens, so I have a vested interest in Whitefish. I am here to express my concern at the Whitefish Police Department's handling of racial bias, but more so the implementations of our community, sorry, for our community, of Whitefish Police Department's relationship with Border Patrol. First, in terms of racial bias, it is clear at this point that Whitefish Police Department lied to my community about racial bias in Becker's case. They guaranteed that wasn't the cause for calling Border Patrol over and over again, that they had probable cause. Newly released evidence from the traffic stop proves that there was no probable cause. It is possible that Officer Hingis is not generally racist, but made a terrible, life-changing mistake due to the current pressures of the climate today. Could Whitefish Police Department have tried to handle that internally while covering him publicly? Also possible. If that's the case, that's a lot of mistakes, and I expect Whitefish Police Department to make a full, clear, public apology, including an explanation of how they will avoid further mistakes like this. The only reason I even offer this bit of grace is because it does appear that since this case, they have changed policies and behaviors and are not currently working with Border Patrol. I don't know if that will continue. I am also here because I met Officer Hingis when I performed a First Amendment audit at Border Patrol. They failed miserably and called Whitefish Police Department on me and demanded that they arrest me. Unbeknownst to Border Patrol, we could hear everything they said through their door. Border Patrol went on and on, close to an hour, about how they are a federal organization and Whitefish Police Department had to follow their orders, regardless of if it violated our rights. They said immigrants are rapists without qualifications. They attempted to bully Whitefish Police Department into clearly violating our First Amendment rights. To his credit, Officer Hingis in this situation refused. The Border Patrol officer was very angry about that and then attempted to intimidate me. He was twice my size, he tried to get into my space. Officer Hingis had to calm him down, I suppose. Border Patrol and ICE across the country are attempting to bully local police into doing their dirty work. So why I'm really here is to warn you. With zero experience in organizing and zero warning, we fought Border Patrol and we won. We've had over a month now to organize. We are a grassroots organization. We have endless amounts of heads. Every day we go larger and stronger, and especially since this case occurred, we've seen exponential increases. We have lawyers, doctors, teachers, religious leaders, military members, every kind of possible leader, community leader you can imagine fighting next to us now. You may have noticed our Border Patrol protests got smaller. That isn't a lack of interest, that's a strategy. If Border Patrol or Whitefish Police Department violates community members' rights again, you will see how much we've grown. We will not be stopped. We don't have experience, and if you make us do this, mistakes will be made. We have courage and strength, and you'll see it. You have options right now. I've seen the city of Whitefish come together to fight for our community before. When Richard Spencer and his white supremacist followers attacked our community, we stopped them in their tracks. They tucked tail and hid. We'll do it again, with or without your help. I'm sure you've seen videos now of rogue law enforcement in masks refusing to share names, violating people's rights, and communities are standing up. Civilians are fighting back against rogue law enforcement in full battle gear. I am a mother, a business owner, a farmer, a substitute teacher. I stood up to a Border Patrol guy twice my size, and I will do it again and again and again, as long as it takes, and I have an army of people behind me that are going to do the same thing. So I am here to tell you that I know my community. We're not going to bend a knee to fear tactics. We will stand up, we will fight back, we won't stand back and watch. Whitefish is an uncomfortable place, and I don't envy you, being unlucky enough to be the ones where Border Patrol is located. But it's also an opportunity for this town, same as we did with Richard Spencer and his white nationalists, to show our neighbor's country and the world what we stand for. And you all have a part in that, for better or worse. My demand is that is twofold. One, that Whitefish Police Department not only stands up and shows great strength by apologizing, and then continues on to publicly stand up against Border Patrol in support of the constitution of this country. I demand that the city clearly and with great strength does the same, and that you both hold each other accountable to do so. No one can give Becker back the extreme violation of his rights. What you can do is definitively and intentionally move forward to ensure this never happens again, because I can promise you that if you don't, we will, and this community is strong enough to do that with or without your help. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. John Ratka Skinner from Marion, resident of Marion. I wanted to maybe perhaps bring some more technical items to y'all's attention. Hopefully, that would further some of the discussion that you have, perhaps with the city manager, with the chief of police. Some of the concerns that we've brought up are, is there training materials? Do the police officers routinely receive training every two years, every one year, or, as I likely suspect, they simply sign an acknowledgement that they've read that section in the handbook? And so that would definitely be a suggestion that if the policies have changed over a period of time, is there actual, real training and are those available, the training materials? I think they would be, that doesn't seem to be a personnel issue specific to any one individual. So I certainly hope that y'all will ask about those training materials. Again, when I spoke two weeks ago, I did read the incident report before I spoke. I also kind of got the impression that most of y'all did not, which is fine, but luckily that has been published by the Daily Inner Lake. I'm not trying to pick on anyone, but I would like to just clarify some points. And so very respectfully, Deputy Mayor Sweeney, at your closing comments last time, you had made some comments indicating that there was no indication that he had been stopped because he was brown or Spanish-speaking, and again, that is not an attack. What I would like to clarify is what we are really saying, and maybe he was stopped because he was brown. But again, I think that we can say, like you said, that there's no indication at this time. I think what we are trying to say, and if that was not clearly communicated previously, was that the decision, the discretionary decision to call Border Patrol during that stop was, in fact, because he was brown and spoke Spanish. So I did want to clarify that, and I do appreciate your input from last meeting, but I do think that that is a very important distinction to make. Moving on again, I'm not picking on anyone. Councilmember Quinell, is that correct? Okay. And I believe you had made the comment, well, I've been stopped before and nobody's ever called Border Patrol on me. Why did we call Border Patrol on this person during a routine traffic stop? That was you, yes? Okay, perfect. And that's a great question. So I would hope that you've read the incident report, and when I read the incident report, I think the conclusion that we would draw is, well, because he was Hispanic and spoke Spanish and very brown. I didn't see anything suspicious in that report. The officer made note that this individual was nervous, but the officer also made note that he wasn't able to communicate probably at all, but at least very well with this individual. So again, as somebody who is bilingual and speaks Spanish and has the cultural competency, I'm going to read my interactions with Spanish-speaking Latinos probably very differently in live time than an officer that doesn't speak Spanish. So was Becker nervous? Maybe. There are probably a lot of white folks that get nervous when they get pulled over as well. It's not great to get a parking ticket or speeding ticket. So again, I think the answer to Councilmember Quinell's question, which was a very great question last time, is absolutely this was racial profiling. I would also probably, I'll try to move it along, but I think there's been some comments that people, there are plenty of immigrants in the valley who, you know, support the work of Border Patrol or the police, and they don't see the problem. I think maybe it's worth pointing out that people who have accents that are white will probably also not be treated the same way in a traffic stop. Wrapping that portion up, I think that if you have read or could reread the policies on bias in policing and the immigration policy, when I read all that and the incident report, I very much plainly feel that the policy of the police was violated. The officer clearly violated those policies. So again, you know, there are individuals that I hope you're able to talk with, but for me, when there's a clear violation of policy, there should be some sort of investigation or action taken on that, and from the information I have right now, I don't feel anything substantive has taken place. You know, I think we've been at this for three weeks, excuse me, six weeks, three meetings. You know, I think the next step, are we gonna be looking at more material that comes out? In four or six weeks, are we going to be reviewing the police stop footage together? You know, I think now is sort of the time to maybe turn the ship and say, there is valid concerns here, there isn't just nothing, let's actually talk about what this policy is and what's going on. One of the things that concerned me was, I don't remember which meeting it was, but the police chief indicated that Border Patrol had come out and given training to do two different shifts. That's very concerning. It's also incredibly one-sided. So last year, for example, through my community advocacy, I worked to provide approximately 60-ish immigrants in our community with connections to legal resources through legal filings. I'm not just some nut, you know, off the street. I mean, this is what I've been doing for three years with people in the Latino community. The messaging, now, I was not present at that training with Border Patrol, and I certainly hope that there's a record of what the content of that training is, but I can tell you, through my national associations and my advocacy, the language that is coming out of Border Patrol is going to be very different than what you hear from community advocates and immigration lawyers. And so I would very much ask that you also invite the community to have that training with the police as well. One thing is the day after, excuse me, I'm getting over being sick, so my mouth is super The day after Becker's encounter with Whitefish Police and later Border Patrol, I was at a Latino family's house doing some of their immigration paperwork with them, and there happened to be a police stop outside of their residence. This was not Whitefish, it was another jurisdiction, and so, you know, a community member And so, you know, a community member contacted me, it was a Latino, I went out there. That police officer with very much an appreciation for the environment chose not to call Border Patrol. Calling Border Patrol on people, even if people do or do not have certain forms of identification for traffic stops, I mean, I think really at this point is negligent. You know, that really puts people in danger. So again, we do have, and so what I was able to do during that traffic stop, I was able to interpret for that officer. The officer was also using, you know, his phone translator. Again, that officer made a very direct decision not to loop in Border Patrol because it really was not necessary. And so I think there is a very big discrepancy in what I encountered in a police stop the next day with another jurisdiction and what happened with Becker. So again, I, at this point, do anticipate that there is going to be a call for some sort of working session. I really think that there needs to be an actual thoughtful evaluation of the policy and how we work with Border Patrol. The only thing that I can understand is that we've decided to call a supervisor at some point in that interaction in the future to see if that's warranted. But again, that criteria, I don't know what that criteria is. I'm not sure that anyone can articulate that today anyway. And again, that's also very concerning. So again, you know, I thank you for letting me speak. I mean, I guess the next step is, are we going to be looking at the police recording in four, six, or eight weeks? Or are we going to start now to ask those questions and make sure things like this don't happen again? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jacob Courtford. 535 Colorado Avenue. I am the the son of Joe Courtney. Some of you might know, he likes to make himself appear at city council meetings and stuff and hold everybody accountable for zoning and, you know, some of the stuff that the more wealthy folks around here get away with that the rest of us don't. And he's moved out of town, I've moved into town. We've switched houses, the only reason I can afford to live here is because I'm living in my childhood home with my whole family, so. Now I'm here to hold you accountable. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but geez, after listening to all of this, I feel like something needs to be said from inside me, so. I did not get the memo for the, I don't know, the Peanut Gallery meeting. And I wasn't sent by Antifa, but I believe very strongly in social justice and genuinely in the town that I grew up in. I grew up in here, maybe a little privileged and blinded to what was going on with some of my other friends. And so I think I grew up with a view of this town as a very, very loving, kind, inclusive, and friendly place. It wasn't till, you know, around high school, I started seeing my friends have interactions with cops, you know, at a party or this or that. And I started kind of watching the Whitefish Police Department follow friends around, like cars around during lunch and stuff like that. And so, I mean, there's a few, there's a few things that I felt had changed. And then I left, I came back, and I wish this town was what it was when I was a kid. I wish it was the like fairy tale land that it was when I was a kid. But society's changed, this country's changed, and this town has changed a lot since I was a kid. And I don't expect it to go back to that, but I really expect our morals to go to where we all hope it would be, which would be a loving, kind, and inclusive place. I'm just gonna talk really quick on the housing issue. Because we all know that in recent years, money has really infiltrated this town. People with money, money moving from those people to, I don't, I don't know. I don't know all the specifics, but we can all feel it. Everybody who works a dishwasher job at Craggy Range can feel it. Everybody that plays music on the street and has all of the businesses around them not want them there can like, can feel that. I mean, we, we got rid of the, there was like a rule against busking for a while, which a lot of the, like the train hoppers used to play on the street. And we got rid of that for the same kind of reason the Kalispel City Council put out their giant piece about homelessness and how that's the big issue. And I think we all know that the big issue is the bigger money that is involved here and is influencing stuff that's outside of a lot, a majority of our hands. And one of my, like, just small examples in relation to that was the proposed idea of something low-cost housing north of the Viaduct, down towards the Lodge. And to my understanding, that got axed pretty quick because some of the people with, you know, fiscal pull down there didn't like that and didn't want that. And that seemed like, seems like that's all that it takes to get rid of something that would be beneficial for the majority of the lower class and the middle class around here. Lastly, I'm gonna talk on the situation with the police, because...
Jake, if you don't mind just speeding it up a little bit, we have a whole agenda to still get through for you and others that wish to comment.
Yep. I, I will not speak to my own experience because I've, I've felt it. I've had friends here that have felt it. And I witnessed an episode a couple of years ago where one of my friends was harassed for her color on the corner right outside this building. Somebody got in her face and screamed some pretty obscene stuff toward her because of the color of her skin. And I, to my understanding, our police officers let that intoxicated man go on his way home with zero repercussions or anything. And that feels pretty slanted to me. So I guess I'm just gonna leave this with, it's up to us to make this what we, this town what we want and not falling to the outer pressure from bigger administrations and stuff and not falling to the bigger money, I think is exactly what's gonna do that. And listening to constituents, everyone else here that's spoken has said more than I could even. So no one is illegal on stolen land.
Thanks, Jake. Hi to your dad for us.
Oh, I will.
I'm gonna call on this gentleman, since you've already had an opportunity to comment.
Hello, Council Mayor. Name is Ian Fleming, formerly lived here in Whitefish, but moved down to 249 Reserve Place in Kalispel. I was here originally to talk about government policy and procedure, but I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring. I hope you'll forgive me if I hang onto this one, though. This is a really a challenging and troubling problem, I think, and we're all wrestling with this at this moment of what we do in the face of all of these different crises that we're faced with. I would encourage everybody to think about this as we review what is going on in our community with sort of remembering what the scale of failure might be. If I send a text message to my colleague and accidentally say the wrong name or spell somebody's last name wrong for who is coming to an event with us, maybe their name badge is spelled wrong. That's embarrassing, and it should be. But they're not going away for a week, they're not missing work for a week. We need to be thoughtful and cognizant of the scale of errors and what that means for people's lives when we're making decisions. And I don't think that undermines what rave work, the great work that people are doing. I think that we just need to make sure that we understand that and hold them to a responsible standard at that level. Government policy, procedures, stuff like that. I originally came here to talk about that. I do hope that I'm not trying to tell staff how to do their job. I was really grateful when Alan presented what Missoula had done in terms of demonstrating what these different types of areas look like to people. I think that that is really important to have these discussions, that we have shared language to have these discussions. Because I don't know, if you've ever had a discussion with an economist, when you're not an economist, they say words that you have no clue what they mean and/or they say the same words and they mean completely different things. We need shared language to have these deep discussions, especially when we're trying to have dialogue about what the future of our community looks like. So I would implore that something like that is worked into this process in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ian. I'm gonna temporarily switch up the agenda. We have someone in the audience that would like to present on Item 9B. It's a letter from Glacier Nordic Club regarding the Big Mountain Trailhead grooming barn site, if you don't mind. Jenny, that'd be great. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hi, everybody. This is Jenny Bender. I live in Kalispel, actually, but I'm representing Glacier Nordic Club today as the executive director. These are all very important conversations, but I have quite a different topic to address. Shift in, if you can bear with me, everybody. Thank you for your time. You know, as a reminder, we groom a lot of trails, we have youth Nordic programs, and we run the shop at the Whitefish Lake Golf Course in the wintertime for rentals and lessons to the public as a nonprofit. My purpose is just to give a project update on a groomer barn building that we are working on with Whitefish Legacy Partners and the city. It'll be on the city easement up at the Big Mountain Trailhead. We've been working with legacy partners to improve our facilities up there and are finally able to say that we have agreed on a site for the storage area. This is, the Big Mountain Trailhead is on Flathead County land, but it's owned by the resort and with public access via an easement with the city of Whitefish. So that's why I'm here. Also, just from an update from a standpoint of history of this project, we've been in these discussions since 2018 for this project up at the Big Mountain Trailhead. And at that point, about in 2019, we put in electrical and gravel. And we've had temporary storage for grooming equipment there ever since. And paused efforts with leadership transition, and now we're retaking up the project now with site analysis and such, making sure we're doing our due diligence. So from an update, if anyone does have any questions about this project, we hope to go forth with working on the lease agreement and the construction agreement and addressing any changes in the recreation.
Any questions for Jenny? Steve?
I don't have a question, Jenny, I just have a comment. I just wanna offer my sincere appreciation for how long you've been sticking with this and the ups and downs of this entire project. And it's glad that we finally have settled on something and we're gonna have some, you're gonna have some improved ability to take care of the equipment that costs a lot of money to take care of and run throughout the winter. So thank you for sticking with it.
Much appreciated.
Thanks, Justin, too. I see you're online, so.
Yeah, Justin's our board treasurer, he's also running the committee to help with this project. And so we're getting lots of professional advice as we move forward with the proper protocol. I appreciate you guys and your support, and, and thank you for letting me give you this update. If you have any questions on this process at all, feel free to reach out.
Andy?
Yeah, I'll just make one quick comment. As watching this come through the LLAC and through Trail Ops Committee over the last seven years now, I'm glad that we ultimately ended up finding a spot, which was the spot we had originally. But what I want to really compliment Jenny and Jesse on is they went through a very thorough site analysis despite the fact that we kind of all knew that that was going to be the spot ultimately. But they went through a very thoughtful analysis of all of the other potential sites, and we came back to the spot that was the one that it should have been all along. And every time I go up to that trailhead, which I go up there quite a bit, like several times a week, and I see the groomer just sitting out there all by itself, kind of with his back end down, I'm sad. So let's hope we get money raised and we get it done soon, so, anyway.
Back to Andy.
Our grooming staff will be thrilled. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jenny. On that note, I'm kind of reading the tea leaves. We're gonna go ahead and recess for about seven minutes. We'll reconvene here in about seven minutes. Gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Is there any additional public comment? And please keep it brief. Respectfully.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Britt Cooper, 1400 Wisconsin Avenue, and I did not bring a paper to make notes, so I will keep it promised to two minutes regarding this issue of a law enforcement officer. You've heard from a faction of people here, majority that spoke are not or do not reside in Whitefish, so they're coming in from other areas. I don't envy your position here because I'm looking at both perspectives, but I think you have an obligation to respect our law enforcement agency. The faction that spoke is, I believe, a faction that would defund the police, disband ICE and Border Patrol, and I think the country as a whole has spoken that we are a land of law and order, and that is clear. They serve a point in keeping our society safe and a wonderful country such that it is. I felt I was called a racist by an individual. I'm not racist. I live in Whitefish out for years. I don't know anybody that's racist, yet it seems as though Whitefish is now a racist community. I don't see it. I think you have an obligation to support our law enforcement of Whitefish. I don't think an apology is necessary. My two cents worth. Thank you.
Thanks, Britt. Michelle, anyone online wishing to provide testimony? Three minutes.
Actually, very brief. Stay. All right, I'm gonna sit.
We have a whole agenda to still get through, so please, out of respect for the council's time, be.
Hello. Hello, better. For the record, and for my safety, Z418 East Second Street in Whitefish, and unlike Johnny, the nut off the street, but really the nut on the corner, you ask some people, for the record. Okay. By the way, people, no one has said it yet, Happy Pride Month! Happy Pride Month! Hello, Whitefish? Happy Pride Month! Where is the flag? Where is the proclamation? Happy Pride Month! Okay. As our community's most visible activist, visitors often ask me about the political climate. My usual answer is, Whitefish is the blue island of sanity in the crazy red sea of Trumfuckistan County. However, as a result of you closing ranks in regards to the recent incident of bias-based policing, I am rethinking that characterization. Steve, your initial public remarks were encouraging, but you have since backtracked. Rebecca, your empathy is without question, but you are conflict averse. Ben and Frank threading the needle, and G-Man perennially proudly planted firmly on the wrong side of history. John, crickets. We are at an inflection point. Other community members have articulated specific demands. I only ask you to be better. Be better. Be that blue island of sanity. Thank you, and cheers, queers!
Good night, all.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period. Are there any volunteer board reports from the council? Not seeing any. Do you have the consent agenda that contains the meeting minutes from May 19th? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. That motion does carry unanimously, which brings us to our one and only public hearing, item six A, ordinance 25-6, amending Title VII, Chapter Two, Section Two, snow and ice removal of Whitefish City code. Maria?
Good evening. I will make this as quick and painless as possible. My staff report is on page 81 of your packet. Whitefish City Code 7-2-2 identifies the requirements of residents and business owners within the city limits of Whitefish to keep sidewalks and bike paths reasonably clear of ice, snow, slush, or other impediments in order to provide passage of pathways in the winter months. To adequately provide guidance to the public for the maintenance of sidewalks and shared use paths, staff members from Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Planning and Building met with the city manager to review city code and address inconsistencies in the language in order to provide the council with revisions that will adequately address some of the ongoing concerns and challenges staff has had when maintaining the public rights of way and when enforcing the removal of snow and ice by the public. The redlined version is in your packet, and I'm just going to go over those items and summarize them for you. Planning provided some updates to include additional commercial zones that were not previously listed in the old version. Staff replaced language that required all sidewalks and paths to be free and clear of all accumulations of snow and ice with language that requires all sidewalks and paths to be reasonably clear of accumulations of snow and ice and passable for pedestrians. I want to make it clear that this revision is not meant to lessen the standard of maintenance, but it's meant to address the feasibility of clearing snow and ice in Montana's climate and to lessen the city's risk by creating a more reasonable and achievable expectation for property owners. Ball bouts were added to the list of areas to be cleared in the business district. Language allowing for additional mitigations for managing the buildup of snow and ice was added. Language noting that de-icers may damage new sidewalks, street trees, and city landscaping was added. The 20% administrative fee was updated to have a $60 minimum and a $300 maximum to ensure the administrative fee is equitable, encourages compliance, and at a minimum recoups actual staff time. The code was revised to clarify that a written notice, either by mail or a door hanger, would be given prior to hiring a snow removal contract and billing the property. All other revisions within the ordinance constitute necessary changes in readability. There is no financial obligation for this ordinance. Staff, as well as the city of Whitefish, Board of Park Commissioners respectfully recommend the council adopt the revisions. And though I'm presenting the staff report, I did work closely with directors, tailor, and workmen to draft the revisions, so if you do have any questions, we may tag-team that, depending on the topic.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria on her staff report? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item six A. We'll hold that hearing now. Any public comment on this item?
Richard, come on.
Michelle, anyone online? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Steve?
I move to approve ordinance 25-06, amending Title VII, Chapter Two, Section Two.
Seconded by Counselor Cal Tabiano. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous, Michelle. We will stay with Maria, our Park and Rec Director, to consider the award of the construction contract for Armory Park Master Plan Phase Four. Maria?
Great. I'm on a roll. This one's even shorter. So, this is on page 88 of your packet. In accordance with the Armory Park Master Plan, staff has identified the primary components of the first two years of Phase Four of the Armory Park Master Plan. We began the bidding process for these projects this past month. Invitations to bid were advertised in the Daily Interlake, and bids were opened May 27th at 2:00 PM in the city council conference room. We received six bids. All bids were accepted. Bids ranged from 20.9% lower to 77.1% higher than the engineer's estimate, and the bid totals and tabulations are included in your packet for your review. The apparent low bidder for the project was Lipka Excavating at $153,880. The current overall project budget for FY25 and FY26 is $950,000 identified in the resort tax fund, so we have adequate funding. Based on this available funding and project priorities, I respectfully recommend that the council award the Armory Park Master Plan Phase Four project bid to Lipka Excavating for a total contract amount of $153,880.
Thank you, Maria. I entertain a motion, please.
I move to adjudicate the project to the firm with the, was it the lowest bidding? Yeah, with that firm.
Lipka Excavating.
Lipka.
Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. My only comment is, it's interesting, I only recognize one of the six firms that bid. Are they all out of state or out of county?
No, not necessarily. There's some smaller ones that we speculate had done a lot of residential work, but this is a small bid for Armory Park for a city project, and they're seeing the potential to be able to move into these types of contracts with this small type of work. We're also just seeing a lot more bids coming in than we typically.
That's great.
Yeah.
I will say, Lipka has not been a general contractor for the city, but they've done a lot of subcontract work on alleys and other small excavating projects, and they've done a good job.
Great. Thanks, you guys. I would entertain a motion. Oh, we already did. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle, you have Dana's report enclosed with your packet. Any questions for Dana? Dana, anything additional to report on?
I'd just like to report that today we received our audit report for fiscal year '24. Kudos to Lainey in the finance department. Once again, we've received a clean audit opinion with no findings. That's all I have.
That's great. Good work to the department heads. And we'll move on to item eight C, which we already covered, so we'll... Correct? No, excuse me. Consideration of a request from the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust for funds from the city's Affordable Housing Fund to facilitate the purchase of 405 Trailview Way and to release the deed restriction. Kim?
Good evening again. Kim Morisaki, Executive Director of Northwest Montana Community Land Trust. I am here tonight to make a exceptionally large request from you today. As usual, when the opportunity for the land trust to purchase a home in Trailview comes available, we always try to do that because taking a deed-restricted home and turning it into a community land trust home allows us to bring the purchase price down further and guarantee that it will stay affordable in perpetuity. Today, 405 Trailview is for, is available. You actually already approved us to lift the deed restriction on this about a month ago because we thought we had a different purchaser at the time. And at that time... Is that right? I think I do. No, Mike, I'm maybe confused. Maybe I do need to ask you to lift the deed restriction. I have two houses going, and I maybe just had a brain fart there for a second. I need to ask you to lift the deed restriction on it, and I also am asking for $100,000 to bring down the purchase price from $476,000 to $376,000 for the eventual homeowner. What we are finding is that homes that were built, the larger homes in Trailview that were built after the pandemic are, they were sold in the $450,000 range, and with the annual 3% increase every year, those homes are starting to push up against $500,000, and that is not necessarily affordable for people in that 140%, 130%, 150% AMI range. And so, the land trust's hope is to continue to buy those homes, buy the land underneath those homes, and continue to bring them back down into the $300,000 range. That is the reason for this particular one. This home has actually had six different qualified, people look at it and then decide not to purchase it because it was too much of a stretch for them. And that's the reason why we're asking for the larger purchase amount. And I continue to write grant applications so that I will actually have some funds to do this sort of thing rather than have to come and ask you one at a time. But I don't currently have any extra funds to do that right now.
Any questions for Kim? Just happy.
Actually, I have a question for Dana, and maybe one for Kim. Dana, this $100,000 would be disbursed out of the fund that we deemed towards affordable programs that will, 10% of the 3% resort tax?
So, no, this would not come from resort tax, but would come from the four mills that we levied for fiscal year '25 in the Affordable Housing Fund.
Kim, very quickly.
Yes.
Refresh me, refresh me. There is the land trust that is buying the land under the property.
Yes.
And there is a... And there is a new property owner that is buying the property, the walls and the house without the land.
Yes.
These $100,000, where are they going to end up?
So the current homeowner who owns that house has a right, according to the deed restriction, to receive $476,000. So what will happen is the land trust will bring $100,000 and the next homeowner who's been chosen will bring $376,000. And those funds will go together and they will pay the current homeowner. And then the next, the next time somebody buys that house, instead of starting at 476 and going up, it will actually start at 376 and go up.
Maybe I'm stupid tonight, but I didn't get it. I understand that there is $100,000 difference, but where this money goes from the city chest, the city's chest to whom?
To the current homeowner who is selling the house.
So is he gonna, is he gonna file an income on those $100,000? How is it, how are we giving money to an individual?
He owns the house and we're buying the house. And with the current deed restriction, the way it's written, there's a base price that he purchased the house for. And then every year, every single person who has a deed restriction on their house, they get 3% of that base price added on. And so he has a right to, to, to that $476,000 according to the deed restriction. The houses in that, if they were market rate would be 650. But by, by adding 100, by bringing $100,000 and lowering the base price, the next homeowner, he's going to start at 376 and get 3% every year instead of starting at 476 and getting 3% every year.
Okay, I understand. So we're subsidizing the buyer, not the seller. The seller is going to get the full
Yes.
And we're subsidizing. So is there a realtor fee in this transaction?
I gave the buyer or the seller the opportunity to to go with our real estate agent who only charges $1,500 to handle paperwork. He chose to go with his real estate agent and he negotiated a very low fee with her instead. But he's paying that out of his, his money.
Dana, what is the Affordable Housing Fund balance?
So for this fund, if we were to approve the $100,000, we would have approximately $2,300 left that hasn't been committed. We do have about $200,000 that is committed for the Alpenglow 2 project out of this fund. However, at this point, that project is on hold. So there's adequate funds available, but so you could utilize this. One thing I want to note, this home does not currently have an AMI restriction on it. But under her ground lease, excuse me, Northwest Community Land Trust's ground lease, there would be a AMI restriction. So that's an addition. And then if you look at all of the properties that through Trailview have gone into this, this would be the 10th property. The first two did not have a contribution from the city, so the average would be about $31,000 per home that you would have contributed.
Sorry for the question. It's right in your staff report.
Nope, that's okay.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion, please. Or Ben?
Let me comment really quick.
Sure.
Kim, I really appreciate you and I really appreciate you always coming here, just so you know. But I'm going to preface that first and then I'm going to say I have a few concerns about this request and I'm going to tell you why.
Okay.
So we have a very limited amount of funds available for affordable housing. And it has been my experience that, one of the reasons why I've really supported when you brought these here previously was that it came with matching funds attached. And so it would allow us to, to take a dollar of our affordable housing funds and extend it a lot further than it otherwise would. And I still think that's a wonderful way to do to get to work together to create excellent outcomes for people. You know, this one's a little tougher because it, it doesn't come with that. And so we're using taxpayer funds, dollar for dollar, to reduce home prices. And that tends to be the most expensive way to produce affordable housing. I mean, you have to buy a market price all the way down to something that's affordable and this town is exorbitantly expensive. And, you know, I know that as an example, the Alpenglow apartment complex, you know, is an entirely different way to use money where you can borrow against that money and use it to create more apartments. And I think it can go further. And so I don't know. I guess I would just say that if we started looking at this sort of buy down program, I might prefer to do it in a more holistic way. And, and also this would take our, our fund balance down to essentially zero. And so I think for me, I don't know that I would support this request right now. But I just wanted to say all that so you understand that we support you and we continue together. Yes.
Can I, I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Um, in the 10 houses that we've done, we have brought 30, 60, 90, even $120,000 to the table for each, each house had a different arrangement. Several of them that went to people with 80% AMI, we were able to bring 90 or $120,000. That, this time last year, we were fortunate that we were able to tap into both some federal funds and some national banking grant funds that were then matched by local banks. If I could, I would do that again. I just don't have access to, I just don't have access to them right now and the house is available right now. And the federal funds, I have been told, will be available again, starting this fall or this winter. And I fully intend to get my hands on as much of that as I possibly can to be able to bring to the table for Whitefish. I just, I don't intend to do this every time. This is kind of a one-time opportunity that presented itself and I don't have another solution. But thank you. I do understand what you're saying.
Further comments? Or Giuseppe?
Yes, I guess I'm asking ourselves this question. I, I agree with Ben, by the way, and I agree with Kim since you agree with Ben. So that's an old tale. I was wondering if you have this certainty and it's a matter of time, is there a way that, that we, we have deposits that generate interest? Can we loan them the money for 12 months and at a certain reasonable interest? They're going to get the grant, they're going to pay it back and it's neutral to the taxpayers and we have affordable housing?
The council would have to adopt some type of like revolving loan program for that to work. You would need some official documents, interest rates, those type of things. Timing wise on getting that completed might not meet the timing for the seller's intent to sell. It's definitely a program that we should look into for our resort tax dollars, not just for this program, but for other developments. For example, Alpenglow 2, you could have it be a revolving loan type of scenario where they're able to utilize the funds and avoid financing costs during construction. So it's definitely a, a program that we should look into. But for this scenario, I think the timing would likely prohibit the land trust from purchasing this property. Again, they're putting income restrictions on there. The average taxpayer contribution for 10 Trailview homes is $31,000. As Kim mentioned, in the other homes, they've brought forward at least, if not more. And so when you look at the percentage of what the land trusts provided versus what city taxpayers have provided is different. Or is, there is that benefit. So yes, that program's possible, but I don't think it would meet the timeline for this property specifically.
Frank?
I, I appreciate both Ben's and Giuseppe's concern here, but I think the, the key issue here is opportunity that we have as a community to provide these funds under these circumstances to do a good thing, which is what we want these funds to be used for. We have to keep in mind that we have never been asked or had been asked to be in a position where we had to contribute anything close to this, but at the same time, the land trust has brought a lot more money to each one of these purchases than the city's been asked to participate in. I mean, you can see that with the average cost of what we've contributed, which we would have contributed probably without even thinking about it. On an average basis, we would have done it anyway. I think this is, it's a little unfortunate timing. At the same time, that's what these funds are for. We can't, I, I think it's silly or it would, it's foolish for us not to take the opportunity to buy these homes down even further on a perpetual basis. Given what we now know is the average cost or the average contribution that we've made to all of these. I think, I think it's a fair, it's a fair trade in terms of what the land trust has brought in terms of reducing the prices of these homes and providing them in the most affordable way they can be provided on a long-term basis. So I really am going to support this and I, I think it's, I think we have to look at it as a one-off. This is not, we're not making a policy statement here. We're not, that's not what we're about doing. I think we're trying to deal with a discrete problem, which we can. And we know what the parameters are and what we, when we can't do this or when, how we want to operate in the future. I think we ought to take this opportunity to to buy this home down and to put it in a better position, long-term for this community. If we don't, if we don't do it now, we may not get that opportunity again for a very long time. So I, I appreciate and I think they're all really valid concerns. But I think we have to think about this in terms of a discrete matter, a discrete house under these circumstances. So that's all I would say to argue.
Do you care to make a motion?
I do. I would move that we award the $100,000 or support the payment of $100,000 to support this.
Seconded by Councilor Norton. Further discussion? Rebecca?
Yeah, Alpenglow 2 is on hold right now, right Dana? So is, is this $200,000 for this fiscal year? Or is it carried over into next fiscal year too?
So funds remaining at the end of fiscal year '25, which will be the end of this month, will carry over to next fiscal year for Alpenglow 2. So we still have those committed through the contract. So you can't spend those funds because that is already under that contract. We have additional funds in the resort tax fund for housing that is also dedicated to Alpenglow 2. Those will also, you'll see those in the budget as well.
Okay. And so the snow lots not going anywhere at this time. Alpenglow is not being built at this time. So this is really, other than private partnerships where we have people dedicated building affordable housing units within their complex. This is the only way that we are actually building affordable housing right now in perpetuity. So I, even though it's more than we normally spend, we have the money. And also this is one strategy that people use all across the nation is they, they put more and more land into conservancy, into the land trusts as a way to preserve their towns, actually. And people that aren't even needing affordable housing are doing it with Kim. They're just electing to do it to keep the housing stock local. I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Giuseppe?
Yeah. Respectfully, I, I disagree with the exception point, Frank. We just learned that the community has contributed $31,000 per affordable houses.
With this $100,000, it would be 31.
Without this?
Or without this, it would be 21,000.
Okay.
Well, nope. Sorry. 210,000 divided by nine, if anybody can do that off the top of your head.
Twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three thousand. So that tells me that this $100,000 would go five homes if we looked at the bigger picture rather than the exception. So we're discussing here to drain the funds to zero for one home when, I mean, if, if we could have the loan would be fantastic, but we don't have it. So I would, as legislators here, I don't want to look at the exception. I want to look at the big picture. And, and maybe those $100,000 four months from now will go a longer distance. Thank you.
Further comments?
My only comment is a bird in the hand is worth a whole lot more than two in the bush. And so I'll leave it at that.
Never heard that.
I know you haven't.
Just kidding. Andy? All those in favor of the motion? Or did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, I guess. When I first saw the $100,000 number, I will admit that I was a little shocked by that. And kind of the way it came to us, I think Kim, just in the way you wrote it, it's like, oh, we're just buying down the cost of the house by $100,000. It didn't really convey that we were actually purchasing the land lease like we have in the past and I understand that. So that's fine. And then I was like, well, $100,000, but I'm comfortable with the fact that we're very comfortable with spending $30,000 per lot to buy a land lease. And I think that we've done that obviously six other times and seven other times now. We were lucky to get two for free. I think that was pretty awesome. Thank you for that, Kim. That was a good thing. So we still come out at like $31,000 and $31,000 seems to be the number per house that we're willing to spend. And so I'm comfortable supporting it for that. And I will agree with Frank that it is a burden of hand. And it's not like there's more houses being built there and we may not have other opportunities in the future. And I think that anytime we can get a family in the house, that's an important thing. And I don't think that this sets a precedent for us. And while Giuseppe, you commented that that could be five other houses. My question to you on that would be where? So I'm going to vote in favor of the motion too.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion does carry on afforded to vote with Giuseppe and Ben voting in opposition. Thanks very much, Kim.
Thank you. And I won't make it a habit to come and ask for $100,000 everywhere.
I'll move on to item 9A. We need to appoint a new council representative to the Community Development Board. And on that note, I just wanted to thank Steve on behalf of the council for all your work over what's been, what, 15 years working on that board? You lost track. Yeah, but thank you very much. You, you kept them in their lane or at least tried to. So. Frank, are you up for the challenge?
I agreed with Steve that I would be happy to, to step in on a, on a near-term basis, certainly for the remainder of the year until we would, until a new council is seated and we might make decisions on where who might be interested and available for that. I mean, I've got, I, I like Steve, have participated on that board for even longer. Given my history, I, I kind of get it. It's hard to manage, but I'm willing to do it. And my wife has reluctantly agreed to allow me the extra two meetings a month.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone willing to be a backup in the event that Frank can't make the meeting? Okay. Counsel comfortable with that? Those appointments? I'll just take a motion for the record.
I, I move to appoint Councilor Frank Sweeney as Councilor Representative at the Whitefish Community Development Board for the remainder of the year. And Councilor Norton as a backup.
They're second? Seconded by Councilor Norton. All those in favor? And that's unanimous as well. We covered 9B. I will go to counselor comments. I'm going to start here just to try to get through our business from the work session. It's my understanding that we need to authorize a consultant, RFP, to deal with the land use element. Is that correct?
We would bring that to council, but yes, that'll be a future consideration if you want to give direction that
Yep.
that's okay for us to at least proceed with that process.
Sounds like it's really not an option to not do that. So is everyone in agreement to proceed?
Is there any, any sense of how much something like that may cost?
It depends on what the scope of services requires, but it could be 100, $200,000. But we have the grant funds. So to be clear, this would be grant funds that would be utilized for this.
And do you feel, I mean, because we hired a consultant for the Economic Development Chapter, correct? And do you feel, I mean, because we hired a consultant for the economic development chapter, correct? And did that go well enough? And do we feel that it'll help expedite this?
I'll leave that up today, but in my opinion, this is going to be somebody who's more of a facilitator that is trying to, uh, work with the public, work on how do we collect data? Public outreach, those type of things. Um, the economic develop, that the economic development, um, report is very much more data-driven than I think what we would be looking at here. This is going to be more of bringing community thoughts together, but Dave, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, economic development, we had to, you know, go out with the specialists that specialize in economic development. That was the third time that we worked with that consultant. Kate McMahon used them on the Wisconsin Avenue corridor plan and we, um, used them again on our Highway eighty-three South plan. So we were comfortable using them as a consultant again. Um, and this, I mean, you know, a lot of people are busy right now. Most of the cities that are implementing MLUPA are using consultants. I don't know how busy they are, you know, we're going to kind of be a crap shoot, I guess, to see, you know, which consultants out there within the state, um, would even, you know, put in an RFP. I don't, I'm not really sure, so. But it's really going to be down to the scope of work, what it's going to cost. And I'm, you know, guessing probably two hundred thousand or you know, in that ballpark. But we also want them to do some design work for us and also make some suggestions with regard to, you know, zoning language with, for implementing MLUPA.
Who'd like to start? Giuseppe, any comments this evening?
Uh, just a question. Are we commenting to give a direction to the staff? All we needed tonight for the staff regarding to the work session was this decision about the consultant?
That was my understanding. That was the direction you were looking for, Dana.
I think for that, it, it's good to hear that, you know, I can get a simple head nod that we can proceed with, at least drafting a scope of services and determining how that would work, so.
I think you got them.
Yeah.
You got the head nod, nod and, um, yes, I have a, I have a comment. I actually have two comments. I'm, I'm sorry. Rebecca, I did some studying and I called people and I want to, um, uh, secure, tell the public that the fear of cars, train cars full of liquid nitrogen being hit by a little plane that crashes on that car will cause surely the destruction of the plane, the death of the occupants of the plane, but no further incident in an open space. Because liquid nitrogen pushes the oxygen out. So there is no fire and there is no, um, pollutant in the air. And I remember you being concerned about the airport and the aeroplanes over trains carrying liquid nitrogen. Actually, as I was studying this, I learned that a Tesla or an electric car that would cross the rail or crossing and hit that same train would cause a big, big, uh, fire. So that's comment number one for the public to feel better about trains with liquid nitrogen on board and flames. The second comment is I would like to help looking at the Explorer Whitefish data and complete the picture that was given by some public comments today. Someone said the, the international spending, the data says international spending, not Canada spending from, uh, the Air Data Report and the Visa Report is down three hundred thousand dollars. So I went and studied that report. And what I found out is that year-to-date, twenty-four over twenty-three, twenty-four over twenty-three, international spending went up one hundred thousand dollars. Domestic spending in Whitefish dropped one million dollars. So twenty-four over twenty-three, year-to-date, and you can take Explorer Whitefish's report, the total visitor spending in Whitefish dropped by one mil- by nine hundred thousand dollars. Now we take this one year forward, twenty-five over twenty-four, same period, international spending dropped three hundred thousand dollars. Domestic spending increased three million dollars. So I'd like for the public to realize that if we look at the international spending, yes, we're doing not very well. But I take any spending, I'm not discriminating on where the money is coming from. And, uh, our domestic spending has gone up three million for a net of two-point-seven million dollars, just for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Giuseppe. Steve?
Yeah, thanks, John. Uh, we heard a lot of testimony tonight and I think it, uh, moves us to address it at least somewhat. So, um, Angie, can you give us kind of an update on where we are in, with the, um, Del Castillo situation? What's going on? As much as you can tell us about that, you know, my goal is to be transparent here with the public. And I think that behooves ofs that we do that as much as possible, as much as we're legally allowed to. So could you just kind of give us an update about, um, where we are?
Yes, I can, absolutely. Um, so we originally, um, released an incident report that was very brief because it wasn't a detainment, it wasn't even a ticket, it was just a warning. Um, subsequently, we released a more complete case report in the interest of transparency because people had questions about, um, the gentleman being, you know, pulled over for a traffic citation. Um, we do, um, have policies in place. We have released those to the public. They are publicly available. As far as training records goes, we have those as well, which are publicly available. To the best of my knowledge, nobody has asked for those records other than the Daily Inner Lake, and we will be providing those to the Daily Inner Lake.
How could somebody go about asking for?
Just a public records request.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's an email. It's pretty simple. Um, with respect to the body cam footage, we are not releasing that. That's confidential criminal justice information at this point. Um, it is against the law for me to release it. It's also against my ethical duties as a lawyer, Bridger's ethical duties as a police officer. That can be attained by a court order, which anybody can, um, seek. And I have been in touch with Becker's, um, attorneys and they know that that is the route to go. They've been extremely professional. So they will be seeking that, but that is not information that we would release to the general public, again, without a court order.
Okay, so it's, so it's illegal for us to release?
I can't do it. It is a misdemeanor for me to release anything that I think might be confidential criminal justice information. I can give that to the court and the court can order me to release it and I will gladly do so, but that is not a call that I can professionally.
I see. So, so if a court orders this, then, then it's no problem.
Correct.
We'll release it without.
What I would anticipate doing is giving that information to the court and have them do an in-camera review. And if they weigh the privacy interests, um, in favor of release, then we'd absolutely release it. But that, again, that's a call neither Bridger nor I can make.
Okay. Okay. I, I think that's, uh, to me, it seems like that's as much as we can do. We have the, we have our policies. We have, you're going to release to anybody who asks the training procedures and training.
Correct.
I don't even know what's called that.
Yeah, and Deputy Conway actually was kind enough to pull that information. For me, there are daily bulletins that cover, you know, um, biased policing that cover immigration. Our officers are expected to read those and be familiar with them. We also do DER training, um, which all of our officers have received and all those documents, again, are a matter of public record.
Okay. All right. So it's not like we haven't done, like the, it's not like we don't have these policies and trainings in place.
We do. Absolutely, we do.
All right, and now we're going to allow people to see what, what exactly they get.
People could have always said that.
Okay.
Truthfully, I mean, it, that is a matter of public record. The, these are just, you know, trainings that our police officers go through and those are a matter of public record. The body cam footage is not a matter of public record. But again, if people want to go to the court and get a court order, happy to provide that, but that's not a call I can make, and that's not a call Bridger can make.
Okay. Um, and Dana, is this something we need to have a closed-door session about, uh, so we can look at, I, I don't even know what we would really look at, but.
So, um, according to our charter, the, um, city administrator is responsible for the staff of the city. And I can tell you, you know, I've heard allegations, we've heard allegations of racial profiling, bias-based policing. Our policy clearly states for bias-based policing that any allegations are investigated. It takes time to fully understand the facts, the allegations, um, and go through that process. Unfortunately for the public, that is something that, um, is not available for public, public information, whether or not we do an investigation and what the outcome is. Um, that puts the city at a liability risk. Personnel, individual employees do have the right to privacy when it comes to any type of disciplinary action. But I do want the public to understand that we've taken the concerns very seriously and that we are follows, following policy.
Okay, thank you. Uh, to me, that satisfies, to me, that we are doing our due diligence on our end about what's been going on. And I, I just want to say to the public that, um, I, as a white person, I can't feel the same things that, um, that other people can feel about being scared, not feeling safe in our community. I've lived in communities where I haven't felt safe and it doesn't feel good. So I, I sort of understand, but I don't understand at the same time. Uh, and at the same time, I, I just hope we can keep, keep our heads throughout this whole issue. Because it's important that we don't eat ourselves alive over this, because it's not something that that was born here in Whitefish. It, and we know this for sure. And it's not something that is common here in Whitefish. This is the only incident that I can think of in my twenty-five years here that I've even heard of. Something that is this inflammatory. Um, and, and by all accounts, our police department does get it right. They do. And so I just, I, and I don't want to take away from what happened either, because I've said it time and again, that an injustice was done. We're getting more information out there as much as we can. We're not trying to hide things. We're doing the best we can right now with the information that we have, and I just wish people could have patience with us. It's important, again, we don't eat ourselves alive over this. We are a small community that values diversity, that values difference in thought, one of the most open communities in all of Montana, certainly in northwestern Montana. And, um, I, I want us to be, be careful because we all want somebody to blame. We're all angry. Everybody up here is angry about what's, what's happened, what's going on, on the, in the greater picture as well. And when people get angry, they want somebody to blame. And unfortunately, we have an incident now right in our midst where we can find someone to blame. And it's unfortunate that it's happening here because, again, this is not, this is not a racist community. And so let's be careful, let's really be careful and keep that blame where it lies. And I would hope that it, it makes me really sad that people don't feel safe here. People of brown people, black people, orange people, whatever, that somebody wouldn't feel safe here. It really makes me feel sad. And I, I, I have a hard time because it feels like we are being thrown under the bus of this whole thing that is coming down on us, raining down on us from above. And I just, I want people to be careful where they place their anger because we, we can be angry at what happened and let's figure out who to really blame for this. Because that's, that's the, that's the way out of this together, is to really place the blame where it is instead of eating ourselves alive. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Steve. Frank, anything this evening?
Not much. I, I will make one comment. I think the, the one comment I heard earlier was, um, from Patty, I guess, um, who I guess has been an educator and, and one of the things she talked about was this growth mindset. And I think one of the things that we should all take from this is that we're in that process. I think this incident has brought to our attention a problem and an unfortunate circumstance. But the way out of it is through the growth mindset. For you to receive information, for us to receive information on how you feel and what you want to, want to have happen. Understanding that there are any number of things that we feel that aren't necessarily accurate. The blame doesn't belong for this incident on, I'll leave it at that, but I think suffice to say, we are hearing you. And I think everybody in this staff has heard you. And we are going through the process of the growth mindset. We all learn about what our process is. We all learn what the community wants, which is quite frankly, exactly what our police department wants. So I, I leave that. That's my only comment for this, that this evening. Other than that, it's getting to be summertime.
Thanks, Frank. Ben?
I might shift gears for one second and comment on our work session, um, with respect to the growth policy. Uh, I will say that just watching from afar what's, what happened recently with the adoption of the Heart of Whitefish version. I would say that was a little concerning to me, um, how that happened. And I don't think the, the process that was followed there is exactly what I would like to see out of that. And so I'm going to make two suggestions that I heard in there that rang true to me. One is for the Heart of Whitefish, which I would preface by saying, well, by the way, I'm going to back up and say, I appreciate all the edits that were made. A lot of them, I think, are actually fine edits. There's nothing wrong with it. There are some in there that I probably disagree with, but, um, as a whole, I do not want to discourage anybody from participating. But to the Heart of Whitefish, um, I think it would help if you have a hundred people commenting on that document. I think it would help a lot to make that comment public. Or, or said differently, to not be aggregating the commentary of other, either organizations or people in the town. But, you know, encourage people to participate in the process directly. And that allows the diversity of opinions to come forth, um, without them being, you know, screened down in any, any particular way. And then my second thought is, as it relates to the planning board, um, I, I, I don't think that adopting any person's version of a, of a document is an optimal way to go about this. I would ask, I think Toby's comment made some sense to me about, you know, going through, I don't know if it's issue by issue or line by line. But, you know, somehow incorporating the best parts of all of this feedback into the working draft. I mean, maybe you adopt all of them, I don't know, but, um, it does seem like maybe a more detailed process of actually going through and consolidating that feedback from all sources would be a, perhaps a better way to go about this. And, um, I'm content to, you know, let the planning board just take it from here. But if I was on the planning board, I think it could be considered to reopen the public comment on that one more time and just hear it. But that's just me. So, um, but I want to end that by saying, I really appreciate, I know how hard this is. There's a lot of competing opinions. It's politics. People do not agree and that's the nature of it. And I, I know from personal experience how hard it is to be in your shoes, both, um, our planning, planning board members as well as the people who are participating. And I just want to tell you how much that is greatly appreciated because the, the role that you are all playing in this process, as difficult as it is, and it feels like you're banging your head on a wall, is literally how the sausage gets made. And so, um, you gotta, you gotta work through it. And, um, and I just want to send, um, a lot of thanks to everybody that's participating in that process right now because, uh, this council would simply be unable to do it on her own. So, thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
I agree with Ben. I think, you know, we assigned this to the planning board, um, to complete. So it's a novel way of doing a growth policy for our town. But I, I do think a lot of good progress has been made. And, um, I think if you just go back and revisit, um, Allen's corrections, it will help. And I wanted to say thanks to Steve for clarifying all of that for the public, especially. It's, it's really hard to hear how scared people are right now. And, um, uh, I don't think in all the years I've lived, I've been in anything quite like this. Um, where people are actually being afraid to travel, afraid for their loved ones, afraid of their civil rights. Where people are actually being afraid to travel, afraid for their loved ones, afraid of their civil rights. So, we will get through it, but it is a different time in America right now. I can't speak to the situation right now myself, but I'm just wondering if maybe our attorney or police chief could mention anything for improving safety, people's feeling of safety? Is there anything that you guys would recommend?
I'll speak on behalf of our attorney-in-chief, because we've talked about this a lot and it's very important that that everyone know that all individuals, regardless of their immigration status, their race, how they look, they should feel secure when they are contacting our police department or they're interacting with them in some manner. It's not going to automatically lead to an immigration check or deportation by ICE or Border Patrol. We're here, and our police department is here to serve everyone equally and provide protection for our community as a whole. So I think that's something that, you know, we've put out there and it kind of gets missed, but it is something that is very important and our officers, you know, are really taught and trained that they're enforcing these laws equally and not racially profiling or bias-based policing.
I guess I'd also add that I completely understand the community's concern. We have never had, in my tenure here, and please keep in mind that I represented the city long before I was city attorney through MMIA. We have never had a complaint about racial profiling, about the police treating somebody differently because of their skin color, because of their sex. So, while I do understand the concern, I have faith in our police department that we are policing in a way that is appropriate and I've represented other cities where that is not necessarily the case. So, just my two cents.
All right, thank you guys. And I guess that's all. I just wanted to, a small thing, but the Riverside Park Bridge got fortified with rock and it's beautiful for anybody that goes down there and wants to use the river. Was it JD Thinning that did the work? And it really is a work of art. So, thank you Maria for making that happen.
Thanks Rebecca. Andy, anything this evening?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments about our work session earlier. I agree with Ben and I think that one thing that kind of struck me as I read through everything today, it seems that it wasn't what was added as much that seemed to be a problem for people as it was the amount of things that were in fact deleted. And most of the things, as I read them, that were deleted, were simply painting a picture of reality today. And I don't see that painting a picture of reality today is gonna greatly influence or change what ultimate policies come out over time. But one of the gentlemen said, it's gonna at least let people understand what does happen here and you know, but the public sometimes they forget, it's like, well, I can't buy underwear in town, but you don't want chain stores either. So, you only buy cheap underwear at large footprint retail that's probably a national retailer, because they're the ones that can buy in volume and buy them at a low enough cost. So you have to balance those things, I think, and you're making any kind of criticism of any policy and unfortunately, I think that was the biggest mistake made on the Community Development Board side, was it was a lot of wholesale changes and a lot of wholesale deletion and people felt a little blindsided by that and so while they were, some of the speakers tonight were kind of giving the Heart of Whitefish a hard time for representing a bunch of other people. I did also notice a lot of cut and paste of the arguments in some of the letters that we got today too, so it happens on all sides and I just hope everybody remembers that as we move forward. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thanks Andy. I have nothing this evening. Can't wait until the next meeting. So, anything further from staff?
This evening?